I'd like to call the Village of Weston Board of Trustees, meaning the order could all stand for pledge allegiance to the flag. Pledge allegiance to the flag. Super Bowl all over again. So there's a little bit of a time delay. Good job, Barb.
Yeah, I wasn't sure.
All right, that's all right. Did you see the flyover? The flyover just happened. Yep. All right. Let's see. So thank you all. Roll call.
Lonnie.
Here.
Sagami.
Here.
Cronin.
Here.
Fermally.
Here.
Starting us excused.
Excused.
Pincenot.
Present.
Wyland.
Thank you all. Public comments. I've got a public comment card here from Greg Hoffman. Fifty-two oh three Scott Street, Weston, Wisconsin. Greg, you want to? Walk a bit?
I need to state my name, Greg G. Hoffman, fifty-two oh three Scott Street, Weston.
Thank you.
My apologies to all who were offended by my last address, which ended with unplanned inappropriate remark to all residents. This is out of total frustration. This has been going on for twenty-six years with this company. Anyway, my frustration with Old Castle Glass daily nightly noise penetration within our homes should be apparent from the last twenty-six years of my frustration. Spilling out. Thank you, board members, for your support in Old Castle Glass Corzola Street Harding system noise issue. Thank you. Yes, you'll have to relay that to Captain Aldrich, who, Captain Hancock, for coming over my home on January thirtieth. To actually hear the noise within my home, express true empathy of our helpless situation here. Officer Gunnar Schultz, yourself actually, had him dispatch to our home and through twelve twenty-four. Outside our front steps, he remarked he was feeling vibrations while doing monitoring. And two fourteen twenty-four Travis member, and also stopped by. All three of these officials verified emails they hear Old Castle Glass noise indoors of our home. Some of the loudest, which hasn't happened any of these three individuals. Harshest penetrating noise seems to come evenings, or they run late, and it's just like they think nobody's around, so, you know, they, it's like we can get away with more. Recent snow, right now it's even rather quiet. What happened, Travis, the other day came over and I told him it shut down, probably in a little while, and it shuts down again today, same thing. That day, then five o'clock, we come up, get in the cars, and of course, except for running, we don't know how long it'll run. It runs eleven o'clock, we went to the twenty o'clock. Of course, there's children, neighbor, were they out there? They're affected by this, that you're getting some sleep, that's like, do well in school. Anyway, let's see here. Well, anyway, the noise will return with the forecast being over now melted snow by the end of the week here, so the issues, even though snow does buffer it a little bit. It's very temporary, you know, all of this is the last, and that's really not a permanent solution. Barring any recent Weston zoning department restrictions on Old Castle Glass Corzola Street Harding system, of which I may not be aware of. Jennifer Higgins, I'd like to interview, talk to you personally. You are to request to witness Old Castle Glass noise within our home. Anyway, this could involve several pimps. As Old Castle Glass shut up and started, started up and shut down happens under their control. This may involve personal sacrifice of your family, kind, I'm sure you have children, grandchildren, whatever. But this would need to be after hours, more than likely. I don't know if it happened during the day, I don't know. Like I said, right now, they're not even running, they're running five thirty this morning, you know, they're up and running, that's pretty typical. There again, quite early for most people, probably push the snooze button, they're already up and running. Anyway, please remember, we have been sacrificing and continuing daily nightly as long as Old Castle Glass is allowed to run, not compliant, since mid-October. So this is definitely what, three and a half, four months, right? Anyway, for approximately a year or more, this Corzola Street Harding system did not operate, no silent, of course, it was compliant. Jennifer, this head of Weston zoning department, is our hope that women seeing this Old Castle Glass noise all hours within our homes will make this real for you. Imagine this happening in your home. Your safe place, the home you spent years attaining. Your retirement home.
Greg, address the board, please. Okay, not staff.
All right, I'm sorry.
That's right.
Anyway, hopefully soon Old Castle Glass will no longer be allowed to recklessly endanger Corzola Street neighborhood residents. Jennifer Higgins, I hope you'll share your twenty-four hour phone number with us, the further you are part of this investigation. If ordinances are not enforced to protect residents, there would be no reason to have them. Your simple family as well using their washrooms. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. You do have available, neighborhood does have available the police department numbers, which I know they have gone by. I know I've seen some reports and some emails that they are there, they're, especially when I think of Susan sent some report at like two twenty-three one morning that it started up for about forty-five, no. Oh, shoot, I can't remember the couple now. A Y-Rol, Y-Rol's had, he had gotten woken up for about forty-five minutes, so that was a pretty. Brad Y-Rol.
Actually lives across Turnover, but, but, you're on the Schmitz home.
I'm just making a couple of comments, so, so, the number, the number will not be shared. And that's, that's.
Oh, you don't want me to share it?
No, I'm sorry, Jennifer's. You asked for Jennifer's number to be shared?
I won't, I won't share it. The only number that I've shared, Captain Aldrich, I shared it with.
No, 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 no. I, I thought you asked for Jennifer's number to be shared.
Um, to come to my home, to come to my home, whatever means we could use.
Yeah, we'll see how that works.
Get in contact after hours now. Like you just said, two twenty-three in the morning, that's not totally unusual.
Okay, I just want to make a couple of comments. So, and right now is really not a, public comments is supposed to just be directed at the board.
Okay.
And then, but you had a couple of things here that I thought I'd respond to, so, all right. Thank you, Greg. So noted.
Yeah, thanks for your continued support on this issue. I think, as my wife says, I think we can coexist, but right now it's very, very much tighter.
Sounds good.
Sounds nice.
Thank you.
Have we, has anybody actually asked or mentioned?
This is a public comment only.
Okay.
Okay. Greg, if you want to come in here today and talk to planning or some of the inspectors, maybe a little better.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. Let's see here. Any more public comments? Anybody online? Hearing none. Let's move on to minutes from previous meetings. Number four, approval of January eighth, two thousand twenty-four Special Board of Trustees meeting.
Pushed to approve.
By Wyland. Second by Zagami. Any, any, any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Carry. Number five, approval of January fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four Board of Trustees meeting.
Will be approved.
Will be approved by Pincenot.
Second.
Second by Cronin. Anything on the question? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 All those still carried. Acknowledge reports, minutes from boards, committees, and commissions.
And to acknowledge ten thirteen fourteen fifteen sixteen.
By Pincenot.
Second.
Second by Wyland. Anything on the question? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 All those still carried. Reports from departments. Let's see, eighteen as administrator. He's been very busy.
I had a report in the packet, and I did hand out tonight these handy dandy cards on Robert's Rules of Order. If you would like, I think you could keep them here underneath your, the computer monitors, just so they would be kept in the room. But I also, I just put in the report, if anyone wanted me to reach out to Dan Froth, he's from the local, he's the local government specialist for UW Madison. He'd be happy to come up and do a training just on Robert's Rules of Order. He's done it for the League of Wisconsin municipalities. So if there is interest in that, just let me know when we would get.
I, I would do a doodle poll, see who we can all get there, okay? And then if staff wants to join too.
Yep.
Okay, that'd be great. Anymore you want to?
Nope.
Any more in there? Any questions for Jimmy?
Maybe all the other committee too.
Sure, yeah.
Oh, sure.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And we're gonna give some, like nineteen page version, you said? Again, or thirty-six?
Powerpoint. I mean, he would put together.
Okay, all right, cool.
Is he gonna zoom it, or is he gonna come?
No, he'd come in person.
Yeah, good.
But it makes sense to extend that to any of our neighbors, right? Because Rothschild's got folks that they want to bring, and there'd be an issue to have. Thirty people here versus twenty.
Say to heck with them, no way. Why would we do that?
No, so anyone but Rothschild that wants to come.
Yeah, no, I think that's a great thought, and I think that's a great point. Yeah, that's a great point. So we have a sitting with us tonight, along with some residents with our village, of course. We've got Ryan Vanderwall, who is the village administrator with Rothschild, and the village Rothschild, and the chief of police, Jeremy Hunt. Who's been there twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, however many years, yeah. So, welcome to the meeting, so thank you for joining us. So that's the yes, right? And that doodle thing?
Yep.
Okay, cool. All right, moving on to clerk.
Nothing other than what was in my report.
Election, election, election.
Oh, yeah.
And I would just, I would add to Pam's report that we are, we're gonna put it on the website, it'll be in the newsletter, but we are doing the I Voted sticker contest. So if you know kids in fourth grade through twelfth grade that would like to design our I Voted sticker. We have an online place where they go in and they would upload it to us. They'll all be displayed here in Village Hall in April. We'll do in-person voting, and then we'll print that sticker for the fall election.
For four to twelve?
For, fourth grade through twelfth grade.
So if that wasn't available in the late sixties and early seventies, could, could somebody that didn't have a chance to do that could now participate?
Could now participate.
Okay, just wondering, just wondering. Okay, good. That sounds exciting, yeah.
We don't have primary, right?
No.
We don't have a primary now.
Anybody from county or?
Nope, no. April two is our first election in Weston.
Yeah.
They were talking about it on National Public Radio.
Yeah.
Just when I was driving here.
Well, Colonel Weller has a primary, and so does the city.
Wassa has like two words have a primary, but that's it.
But they said there's about three hundred primary in Wisconsin.
Oh, I believe that.
How are we doing on the election?
Great. Yep, lots of interested, additional interested people that'll come later in the agenda, but everybody that, I've got four trainings set up for them. And we'll move forward on that. Lot of excited people to work, so.
Do we have a plan to improve parking a little bit here?
Yep, we're working on that too. I'm working with Michael and, and working towards some additional parking. Ways to get people, maybe if we park them on the side or in the back, maybe bringing them to the front and, and in and out. Talking about having just one driveway being in, one driveway being out. So it kind of streamlines it a little bit, avoids the confusion and having some members of staff members out there directing the parking, helping.
So the same way we do with the big trucks. Yeah, good. That'll work out perfect. Sorry. I, I have volunteered to, a golf cart, to run people around, so if we can get a couple volunteers like that, that'd be kind of nice. Okay. All right, anything more on clerk? Hearing no more, we go to clerk, finance, sorry about that. Jessica, anymore? I saw your report in there. Nothing to add, okay. Twenty-one, fire need MS.
I have my report in there. Hopefully, the report will be a little bit better next month. We are missing some of the defined EMS data. We have a new reporting system that we are working on, getting some of the bugs worked out of, so it should be much better by next month. And then the other thing I'll add is we have an apartment complex in town here that we're having a few issues with, that I'm probably gonna have to work with the village with a little bit on some repeated, we'll just say, issues.
Okay.
So that's kind of happening here over the next few weeks.
Sounds good. Any questions, chief? Hearing none. Park and rec.
I do have a report in the packet. I also, just so everybody knows, been doing Emerald Dash for dash removals at Yell Banks, very visible parks. So we've been getting a lot of calls from, we got a call, jail seven, we got a call from stump grinding place, we got a call for people wanting firewood, et cetera. So very visible, but that, we are doing just ash removals for the Emerald Dash.
And what is the exit for that tree? Can you burn them? Can you, or not?
So basically, it used to be where each county was quarantined, they had it. Now the entire state is quarantined, so you can actually move it freely. They do have guidelines if you want to slow the spread, as far as what you're dealing with, you know, as far as, you know, make sure you chip your pile by May one, or burn it. But right now, it's just guidelines.
Okay.
There's actually no, you don't have to do this, because the whole state is quarantined.
Okay, thank you. And, yeah, sure.
Did they start fundraising for those baseball?
They have not. So I had a meeting, or I should say I had a meeting, but we had a meeting with all the user groups. We had a fundraising meeting on the eighth of February to discuss the next step. They actually had a meeting today with the Community Foundation of Central Wisconsin, which was, they want to make sure they can set up a pass-through fund. They don't have to do their own five oh one C three. So they met with them this morning. I also met with a marketing firm last Thursday to score some ideas, but we have not had official action on marketing and building a story behind the fundraising, so it'll be coming back to Parks Committee next Monday, and then maybe we'll see, you know, our path going forward as far as that. We should have another fundraising meeting, they said two to three weeks after our current one, so maybe next week or the following week. See all their meeting went today, and then go from there.
Good.
And Jamie did touch base.
Yep.
As far as that, but we also have to deal with the official meeting, so a negative form for parks is two. So myself and Dino attended the last meeting. Jamie wants to step in. Current Dino would be negative form, so it would be one or the other, and staff. Doesn't matter as far as the meeting, so it's matter, well, we matter, but as far as.
But another board.
Meeting.
Well, another board member could attend. Is that your, you don't have enough people, is what you're saying?
No, we have enough people. It's just, you know, with the committee, three makes forum, two is negative forum. So if I have two committee members there, we're actually at forum, so it's official meeting then.
Gotcha.
Of the Parks Committee.
Okay.
So we have to notice it, do minutes, et cetera, which is fine, there's no issue with that. Just if we want to make it an official ad hoc committee, then we can do that too.
There are other group, we like to do fundraising. The reason I ask, I just want to make sure they don't all do it at the same time.
We're doing it as one group.
Right, one group at the time.
So we met with youth softball, youth baseball, youth hockey, and a school. Instead of everybody going.
That's one.
It's one group, instead of everybody going their own direction, it's one group fundraising for one goal.
Okay.
Because if they all go their separate ways.
They want to do it too.
Yeah.
Pickable. Club is about five hundred fifty people.
Yep, so we want to bring in all the user groups, along with the ones that are not currently involved. So it could be rugby, skateboarding, pickleball. I mean, we want all the user groups together. To fundraise for this goal.
So you want to fundraise for everything at one time?
One goal. It doesn't matter who comes first. Because if hockey goes this way, and they want to raise funds just for the hockey area. No, we want them all go.
So we, we want master plan raising?
Well, yeah, we want them all go for one goal, which is the master plan.
Okay.
Ideally.
Pickleball being number one for Shane.
And we're also looking for a dollar amount from CIP funds, correct?
Uh, we're looking for what the village wants to contribute. So if it is, you know, budgeting dollars per year, or if it's ARPA funds to kickstart the campaign, or drawing up, you know, the actual construction documents for the park. That'll be all discussed next week.
Okay. All right.
I will talk to them soon.
Yep, yep, okay.
Thank you.
All right, twenty-three, Jen, land development.
My report is in the packet. If you have any further questions, I'm available to answer them.
Big time thank you to Green Heck Fan. Those fans in the garage, that's awesome. That's phenomenal, so. Good stuff. Was the installation also included, or no? How did I read that? I, I read the.
The installation, no, Scott saved us money on that.
Oh, that's right. All right, I saw that.
Scott took the time.
I thought I saw some vendor, but that was something.
That was the original estimate, so that saved us.
Oh, I see. Holy mackerel. That's huge.
I have a quick question. How, how does our new Amazon facility compare in size to the one that's in Appleton on Forty-seventh? Is it forty-seven? Who am I talking about, on the east, on the west side?
I'd have to look, I'm not sure.
I would say by looking at it, I would say it's probably half, if I remember, I would say, yeah.
I'm just curious. I was out, I was out there yesterday, and it was a Sunday, and I was just astonished at how much traffic was out there and how much of it was being created by that facility.
You mean Appleton or here?
Yeah.
Oh, Appleton is, yeah, it's something else, but it's also where it is. It's in the valley. Where we're, we're kind of the last mile.
Sure.
Is where we are up here, so, I mean, it's a very large facility out there. What is it, a hundred or?
Eighty thousand indoor, and then another thirty under the carport.
I've never seen anything built so fast, ever, so.
They did, they did a traffic study ahead of time, and then the DOT and the county actually had to approve it, because it was on the county road system.
Okay, and they're good with it?
Yep, they were good with it.
With us? How could they not be?
Just asking.
Okay. Appleton, when they built Appleton, they had all their parking on one side, and then now they have a ton of parking across the road with a tremendous amount of blue and gray sprinkler vans.
Sure, okay.
Should have a whole bunch of those for sale in two years. That'd be kind of nice. Okay.
Ambulance chief.
Yep. So, yeah, I had to thank you there, so, will, will we like officially thank Green Heck, or how are we doing that?
Yeah, we can do that.
Yeah, like something nice.
They actually were here when.
Yeah.
Guys charged it up, because they wanted to see it.
Yeah, we, we had them on site for commissioning prior to.
Well, that's awesome. Stuff. All right, twenty-four, please.
So in January, in the village, we had one thousand thirty-one CAT stats for the village of Weston. I don't know if it's with this pack or not, but we also have our end of year stats for twenty twenty-three. For the village of Weston, we had fourteen thousand nine hundred and thirty-seven CAT stats. Overall, we had nineteen thousand eight hundred and fifty-eight. So we had seventy-five point two two percent of our calls in the village of Weston, and averaged about forty-one calls per day. January was challenging for us staffing wise, because we had a critical incident at the end of December, on summer twenty-seventh, and we actually lost an entire shift that was put on admin leave. However, during that time, and I want to publicly thank Chief Hunt here, Chief Hunt reached out, as well as Sheriff Bill, and they offered staff to help cover any gaps that we had, so we could continue functioning properly, so thank you, chief. Sunset time, all three officers are back working patrol, they're doing well. Officer Martin also retired in January twenty twenty-one, but kind of, I guess not replacing him, but we do have an officer who's now off field training, who's on patrol at Roehes Hospital. And then I do have an update on Old Castle, but it looks like that may be given under thirty-nine.
Sure, okay. I mean, I know what CAT stat means, but I know Jamie doesn't, so can you just explain what CAT stat means?
CAT stats, so we have a CAT system.
You thought it was humane society, but no.
Okay.
All right. I, I do not know what CAT stat means, so I'm asking for myself. So, yeah. Yeah, I'm sorry.
It's accounting. So we have different offenses, so I count right the offenses and calls that we've been on and basically shows how.
It's, it's amazing when I go through that on a monthly or even a yearly basis, which we have in and out, it's, it's just amazing what's happening around here in, in, in our small community. And then you, you hear about the national and the world stuff, but it's absolutely shocking to see those reports over and over and over and over again. I just couldn't believe it, so it's a real eye-opener, and thank you for all what you do, so very much. All right, thank you, Public Works. Michael.
Reported in the packet, we did submit our last action lawsuit, PFAS information to the, I guess, the law firms that are administering it. Yeah, it's a lot of pages.
Second. It is. One eighty-eight.
I'll get there, okay.
Five hundred and nineteen pages. I just want to, I think it's a record, I'm not sure. Sure. I think we'll have some cupcakes delivered later.
So with our paperwork submitted, it can be reviewed. The effective date has not been established yet, so we still have over sixty days to make any changes or get additional paperwork if necessary to them for those. And hopefully we'll be finding out what we, what we'll be getting in any kind of reimbursement. Figure somewhere between probably one and a half to two million, when all is said and done. Then we are, I guess, kind of in the intermediate phase of hiring a utility operator. Trevor Skirvin resigned at the end of January. We did have an internal candidate. Provide him with a offer letter to move from our street department to our utility department today. I didn't catch him at the end of the day, but I do believe he'll be accepting, and then we'll have an opening, I guess, on our street staff. Attached our CIP projects, as well as reports from Dan and Josh for, from Public Works.
Dan's last day is in June, right?
Probably, yeah.
Okay.
He says before July, so I'm guessing in June.
Good, so, thank you. Anymore for Michael? Anyone? Twenty-six, IT technology.
Only thing I have to add is, I guess, Steve and Jim, I just have some of those forms for the key access on your desk that I need to sign.
I have Steve's.
What have I got?
I turned mine in ahead of Shane's, so.
I, Nate, I, so how, what's up with the Kennedy Park access for police use? Where are we at with that?
Write a little. Yeah, I, I have it configured on my end. Like I said before in the past, my goal is to have it done before spring. So as far as prioritization goes, you know, right now, I've been unspoken, speaking, spending most of my time on our GS upgrades to portal, or in the winter. And the utility staff isn't using it as much, so we want to make sure we have that ready for flushing in the spring. But I plan on having that completely, it's, it's ready on my end, I just need to install software at the PD, so they can access it.
That would be something we should still do in the next couple of months versus.
Um, yeah, we can discuss that, I mean.
But you can, I mean, you can talk to that with the two departments, so.
Yeah, I mean, the software is already paid for, we already have it.
Yep.
Usually staff uses it now, so they would just use it to log onto the, the system remotely.
Yeah.
Or they have an internet connection. It's pretty simple to use.
And it's on the parks, Kennedy primarily?
It would be for the, all the cameras at the aquatic center, and for the, the parking lot by the skate park and over the skate, skate park.
Oh, we're gonna have that up.
Yeah, I mean, I guess for me, I just know that in my business, when I get a new tool, it's implemented relatively quickly, and it's been, I mean, we're going on probably seven or eight months here that we've been working on this, so I'm a little frustrated that it's taken as long as it has, especially with the vandalism that we've had going on. I don't know if it's my place to say that, I don't know how anybody else feels, but that's kind of where I'm at with it.
I guess, it's, it's, it's working, and, you know, if they need access to any footage, it's available. It can be provided, but as far as remote access, that they can remote into it, I just didn't have it high on my priority list, because nothing's happening right now.
So they are functioning, and if something were to happen, we would have access.
Definitely, for sure, yeah.
Oh, good, okay, that's good. Anymore for Nate? Anyone?
Is there no long-range card reader now? Are the gates get open now?
Right now, they use short range, so there's.
I'm just a dumb mechanic, show me short range longer.
Yeah.
Physically swipe it versus drive up to the door, or?
Right, physically swipe it. The long-range cards will go into the vehicles, and so as they get within about fifteen to twenty meters of the reader, the gate will start to.
So, okay. So then the chance of getting too close to the reader with your hand and wrecking it with the big tires or something, and it's going to read it off the equipment versus, okay, good. That's way better. Okay, good. Work product transmittals, acknowledge January building permits. And, since I heard nothing, acknowledge January budget status.
Move to acknowledge twenty-seven, twenty-eight.
Uh, thank you. By Pincenot, second by Cronin. Any more on the discussion? Hearing none. Hearing none, all those in favor say yes. Well, thank you, Barb. Simon said.
I'm listening.
I know, I forgot. I'm just trying to catch you. Consent agenda, let's see, what's your pleasure?
To approve vouchers.
By Pencil, second by Wyland. Any more on the question? Any none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
So carried, thank you. Ordinance is thirty-two. Ordinance twenty-four dash zero zero one and ordinance submitting section ten point one zero three entitled definitions. Section ten point one one five entitled number of dogs and cats limited. Section ten point one two one entitled licenses required. Section ten point one two six entitled animals not to run at large. Section ten point one three oh entitled impounding of animals and creating section. Ten point one one nine point oh one entitled community cats. What's your pleasure? Where are we talking?
To prove.
Oh, I think we want to talk first.
Okay. Yeah, well, I, yeah, why don't we get it up on the board? Get it up, I mean, or no? You're having discussions with Rosschild, right?
This is.
Or no?
No, um, I think we just have a couple questions that we would like answered before we would adopt an ordinance. And we had those on the second page of the request for consideration. And that would be one about if setting funds aside and um. If they, if we do wish to set funds aside in order to do this, what would we be requiring of the people that if they did take a cat to be. Spade or neutered to show us that for reimbursement. Uh, with this, the ordinance also has uh, the rabies vaccination as recommended, but not required. Um, if if we've had strong feelings about that, we should talk about that too. At this moment, it's it's written as recommended, but not required. And maybe we'll just do a little recap again. So this, this trap neuter release would be if you have a feral cat. You you have to trap them. They're not, you wouldn't be able to pick them up. They wouldn't be able to come into your house. They wouldn't be able to be adoptable. They're a feral cat, but you would like to trap them, neuter them and release them in order for them to. Maintain their community that they have, but not continue to have more cats in that community.
And early that is being done where?
We would provide a list. We did contact a couple places. Um, the fixes in said fifty dollars, but you do have to make some advanced. Appointments with them.
That's in Marion?
No, that that's hap- happily ever after and they would be, um, I believe a hundred and thirty dollars. Uh, and then the fixes in also and happily ever after is on their list, but they also keep a list on their website of. Available vets that will do it at a lower cost. Not all of them would be applicable to Weston residents, but most of them would be.
And who picks up and who drives?
So again, if you, in some cases, if you were just the resident that wanted to. Do a good thing, you would be trapping the cat and taking it in if that's. We want to have other options. I think we need to discuss that as a board and who those options would be. So if people said, I have this cat issue, but I don't. Want to trap them, we would provide them some sort of referral base.
Okay, uh, is this ahead of something else we're going to talk about tonight?
Um, I did put in uh, an update on separate issue, the non-dog stray contract. Um, Chief Hunt is also here to, to. I mean, to share in this conversation. We do have a, have a meeting with the Humane Society tomorrow to talk more about that contract. Um, I know Trusty Wyland had expressed if if it's. You know, how do we want to handle that? Where do we want to go? What would be potential options? Um, and again, in that case, for the non-dog stray, that would be, I found a cat. I could pick it up. It comes in my house. It wants to stay with me. I don't want to keep the cat, but it's adoptable to someone else. Where would we take that animal? Yes.
In the T L.
T N R.
In our.
Trap neuter release. So tonight on the agenda would be the trap neuter release and we would be asking, are you okay with rabies vaccination being optional in the ordinance? Do we want to set aside any funds for it? Um, if we do, what are, what are we thinking for funds and how would people prove that they would get reimbursed for that? Because we're assuming people would take the cat in, they would. Have the the spade or neuter done and they would present to us documentation to say that I did this and would like reimbursement.
And and then those funds would come out of the Humane Society funds that we would have earmarked for Humane Society?
No, this would be in addition.
So in addition, so uh, so this is a resident or someone that's going to take this to the trap neuter and release, right? Okay, and and then provide a piece of paper saying that I did that. Okay.
I don't know that we should make. Somebody pay upfront for that, though. I think that maybe there should be funding for that and. We should go that route.
I.
I don't see why a resident should have a upfront for.
So now we have to prove. But we have to prove that it's happening here. We have to have documentation that it actually happened here. Kind of like people I work with that live in Wassa that use our stump dump. I can't help it. I can't help but think that way because, you know, they they actually like telling me about it. That they go in there on weekends and dump all their crap in her because it's easier. And I'm just, I I don't know. I I don't know. So if I have nowhere else to go with a cat. And I know it's available here in Weston, I, you know. That's that's a lot to ask. So for proof and payment and all that stuff. Okay.
Um, excuse me, can I ask a question?
Who's, is this Barb?
Yes, Barb.
Need your name and address for the records?
Yeah.
I'm just kidding, go ahead, Barb.
Well, I was just wondering kind of along in the lines that you're saying. How do we know someone isn't going to come in and say, this was a stray cat? And have it neutered or spayed? And then if they're supposed to take it back and release it, how do we know they're not, it's not their cat?
Because it's a feral cat and you don't want a feral cat in your house.
How do you know it's feral?
Because they don't come by you, Barb.
Yeah, but but I guess what I'm saying though is the logistics of it all on if it's from here or not from here, um. Oh, I mean, should we maybe tackle the Humane Society one first? And then see what we have left for this?
Well, the Humane Society, they they take your ID when you come in and they ask you, you know, where you found the cat and all that.
Yeah, yeah.
And and wouldn't take the cat because it was from here.
We don't have a contract.
We don't have a contract.
They also won't take these animals because these would be feral animals.
They wouldn't take them at all.
And our, um, if we proceed with an agreement with with the Marathon County Humane Society. We would pay them the eighteen-five. That was what the motion was. We would pay them upfront and then if there was credits to that, we would receive them in twenty twenty-six. So there wouldn't be an o- option to necessarily divide those funds or take from those funds because the agreement is would be for the eighteen-five.
They will roll over.
They will roll over.
We would definitely want to start that agreement January first so that we already have a cushion in place. But we won't know any numbers until twenty-five or twenty-six.
Tell them.
They won't reconcile till the first quarter of the next year, right, okay.
And then you get the credits the year after.
The year after, okay.
And why we want to do TNR is because the Humane Society, they don't want feral cats. They can't duck feral cats out.
Hmm. What is the estimate on TNRs or?
We don't know how many people would would utilize the program, um, that. That would likely only be a guess, but we would anticipate between fifty and a hundred and fifty, depending on where the cats would be taken.
And what kind of a contract would we sign or what kind of an agreement handshake that we would have? With the TNR, the the Humane Society, I kind of get the gist of that. What would we be uh, liable for if we did a TNR?
So.
Or can it go to anybody?
It could go to any place, any veterinarian that someone would take the animal to. It it wouldn't. Unless there was some sort of funding that was attached that said it, we would only reimburse, but I I don't know that. I mean, that would be a conversation with the board, but otherwise it. That's why we say that the fix it is ends has a list of who would take. The feral, feral cats.
And do we believe with statistics that the TNR would start off heavy and then and then gradually go down? In theory, it should, right?
I think you'd want us. Not that you necessarily want to tie someone's hands of you have to take it to A, B, or C. Um, I think if you just set a max dollar amount, whatever that average number is or whatever the low dollar is, if it's fifty dollars or something. And if I want to take it to my Cadillac veterinarian and it's a hundred eighty dollars, but the village will pay the first fifty and I eat the rest. Well, then, that's where I want to take Fifi or whatever.
Is that what we're thinking? Are we thinking a portion of the bill or the whole bill?
Well, you you said that the, they would have to go to a place in Marion, correct?
That's one of them, that's one.
Okay, but there's like, there.
It's a list.
Half a dozen. I mean, they they pop up from time to time of the this, this vet or this place or. This traveling vet or whichever will go in for like thirty bucks or fifty bucks or whichever. But if you can't get into the traveling guy or he's not coming for three weeks, take it to your vet. Yeah, it might cost a hundred and fifty or two hundred dollars.
And right now we have a resident that has a five oh one that's transferring him to Marion. Is that correct?
I know, I'm. I'm not sure how many that are going there, but I do know that some are going there, yes, yes.
I thought that got tipped out though, though. No, it did not. I I know I talked to several people and I know one of them said she just can't afford it anymore.
Where is the fix, where is the?
I don't know the location of them. I just know they offer grants. So on their website, they have nine different places. That they, they give grants to, so people can take these stray or feral animals to these. Different places and get them spayed or neutered and they will, they apply for a grant. And the fixes in supports that I believe they give fifty dollars per. Animal that is spayed or neutered.
Yeah.
It's only certain dates.
I I I'm willing to give it a try. So I don't know what the rest of you are thinking. Oh, we're here to do something to the Humane Society. I think we'll maybe do that with another neighboring community, but. This one here is kind of a stand on their own, but what, what?
Can I make a comment?
Yeah, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
So I have taken animals to the fixes it.
Yeah.
I have six of them in my house.
Oh, okay.
We have a rat problem. Uh, without those animals.
Nothing against anybody.
So I mean, they are a good thing. I would just recommend that you do the rabies vaccinations and make it required. The reason why. Is we have one officer that had the rabies shots. It's fifteen thousand dollars. And Nick knows that if you're looking for an animal that fits somebody and you're trying to chase a feral cat out, it's going to be hard for us to catch that animal. So for the five bucks to get a shot, and some of them are three-year vaccinations, I would recommend that you do it that way and you do clip the ears on the animals. So someone's not going to take their personal animal there and come home with a clipped ear on the animal, so.
Yeah.
But I think it's a good program, but I would require that they do the rabies vaccination.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Greg, you have some?
Um, we've noticed a lot of us birds in our yard. We got several cats that come through, so they do seem like they're killing off the birds. So it really nice orders. Uh, trapped, moved or re- released for that reason because they have claws and climb trees. You know, so they're killing on the, on the wildlife. It's kind of nice to see their wildlife also. It's part of me, me and this that.
Okay. But.
In defense of that, it it hasn't been addressed in a few years, so the population is has grown, so that's why we're taking care of it.
Anybody have a a thought on dollar amount? I mean, I, we're not, are we talking about a per uh, uh, per event or so much a year? This will be able to keep, we'll be able to have this in-house.
I think it needs to be a dollar amount per year and then if if we're gonna as part of this have a. Have something that says how much we're going to pay per occurrence, depending on where they take it. I think it needs, there needs to be two parts to that. It's not.
Either the other. I'm listening.
So we can use our licensing fees, licensing fees for that as well.
No, because that's humane.
So we already exceeded that, not transferring money from tourism for that.
Yep.
So that's the other question. Where would this funding come from?
From that eighteen thousand five hundred to be approved. When would it come from that money?
We're gonna have Mexico pay for it.
So enough of that over there. Um, where where do we have funding for that? Jessica, no fear.
I don't have any funding.
Yeah.
The budget was adopted as is and I assume all those funds are spoken for that we adopt.
So this would be something that we would have to plan for for twenty.
Have to take it away from something that.
Something else, yeah.
Okay.
So can we make a correction and? Did you achieve a recommendation for a vaccination? Because we said it's optional to do for vaccination. Make it, they must do the vaccination.
I I just have no, I have no idea where we're, how much we're thinking here, so.
Well, weren't we, weren't we talking about like? I guess if I'm just going to throw a dollar amount out, I thought we were talking about twenty thousand dollars roughly in the past when we, when this came out. So I think that's kind of where my mind's at starting wise, whether we go that much or we go lower, we go more.
I I don't.
But I question.
First thing that came to my head, Michael, is there any salt savings yet this year?
I'm sure we have some.
I I don't mean to pick on you, so, but uh. I think, I think we could find it. I just don't know what the dollar amount is.
Maybe we can get a ballpark from happily ever after that they've been helping us the last few years, so they can kind of give us a ballpark.
I I guess I'm, I I'm thinking of a ceiling of uh. And uh, per event fifty to a hundred bucks. I I don't know if that gets the uh, um, the rabies shot in. But it's like ten or fifteen dollars, right? Whatever that rabies shot is, that's got to be included. For Shane?
Well, is there any other community with this program?
Once I had it, well, still does, but the sponsor that they have is no longer in business. So it kind of hasn't been followed.
Okay.
It was, it was interesting to see what's their budget is.
Oh, I see. And Rosschild does not have a TNR? Nope, considering it?
Yeah, and it will be this is our contract currently.
With, you mean, society?
Uh, that is, it's really good, yeah.
Will you be, will you have a salt credit this year too, do you think?
Likely, yes.
Yeah, oh, I just wonder, okay.
The other communities, because La Crosse also has one.
Kenosha does. I mean, when I Googled it to try to find somebody that was a comparable ordinance. Wassa, Kenosha and La Crosse came up.
You've done your research more on these different entities, so what would be a good average number that it's gonna, that would, that it's going to cost a resident to take this in?
Nobody, I don't believe that. I shouldn't say that. I don't know if anybody funded it. The ordinances didn't say that and that it was funded by the municipality.
Let let's, let's get this movement here a little bit. Let's do ten to twenty thousand total. And then let's do fifty to a hundred, but including the uh, uh, rabies shot. And then just see where, see where it ends up. See how far it takes us.
Before I do that, correct me if I'm wrong, but the rabies shot would have to be part of the motion, correct? Because it's not current in our works.
Yes, exactly.
Okay, I move to approve, um, the ordinance as presented for. A dollar amount not to exceed fifteen thousand dollars, funding to come from salt savings, any salt savings we have.
Okay, I I didn't, I I didn't mean that. So I mean, anywhere that we can kind of find it.
One year.
Doesn't have to be just.
For this year.
Yeah.
This year.
Just one year.
Correct.
Yep, one year, but then we have a whole other budget to work with.
Yep. For twenty twenty-four, um, and I would also like to add that we are going to do the rabies vaccination.
Okay, and any, any dollar amount per vent? Plus, plus the rabies?
A hundred dollars per event.
And that includes the rabies.
Correct.
And um.
Is that, is that clear enough?
And and starting January first? Oh, no, that's not, we don't get nothing back on this one.
Starting.
This is all us.
February twentieth.
It doesn't matter.
The ordinance will be, the day after publication is when the ordinance is inactive, so.
Okay, so motion by Cronin winner? I mean, what? Wow, timer. I really like this. Uh, second by Pencil or to Wyland, okay? Any more on the question?
Just one more thing, then we would ask for. We would ask for receipt and reimburse.
Correct. I I think as part of that too, um, we we should ask for verification that they live in the village.
Yep, okay.
Yeah, okay. All right.
Something separate, so like if next year we decide not to fund it, we don't have to redo our ordinance or?
Well, I don't think we'd have to redo the ordinance. Yeah, because if we didn't tie funding to it next year, it would still, people still could do it out of the kindness of.
I I think we should see how it goes for the rest of this year and then take a look at it, budget season next year.
So we have a motion in a second, um. All those, any more in discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
So carried. Uh, thirty. She was an aye.
Yep.
Thank you, Barb.
You're welcome.
Three, ordinance twenty-four dash zero two, an ordinance to approve the rezoning of nine point seven three acres on the back portion of the parcel known as. Eight fifty-eight ten Weston Avenue from RR two. Eight fifty eight ten Weston Avenue from RR two rural residential two acre. RR agricultural and residential zoning district, Village of Weston, Marathon County, Wisconsin.
So moved.
By Cronin.
Second.
By Pimpsonal. Any more in discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Carrie, thank you. Resolutions thirty four, resolution number two zero two four dash. Zero zero three, a resolution to approve the preliminary plat of Arrowhead. The state's first edition subdivision project number two zero two, three zero three, four two. What's your pleasure?
Motion to approve number two, uh resolution number two zero two four zero zero three.
By Cronin. Second by Husheng. Uh anymore on the discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Carrie, unfinished business, update and possible action on American Rescue Plan. That's just a placeholder. Anything?
There is a report in the packet that does show the final number. I know that we had a. Brief conversation at the end of the last meeting for an update of what was remaining in funds. You can see that it's an estimated for the playground equipment, but it'll be right around that eight hundred thousand and then seven sixty six would be remaining. I know we had a conver- there was a question that was brought up about. Holiday decorations and if that fit in here, it would have to be handled as a separate motion, but we wanted to give them back a report of where we were at with funds.
Thank you. Thirty six, update on goals for twenty twenty three, twenty twenty five strategic plan. I saw a lot of that mentioned in reports, but that's moving forward. Uh update on Stillwater Landing Manufacturer Home Park. Any update?
Um they're working on their fourteen new. Homes um getting the skirting on, decks on. That's about it right now.
Do do we need to keep having this discussion?
No, I I think we could pull it off.
Yeah.
I mean, I I do. I think staff can handle it. Uh go ahead.
Um I have a couple things. Do you have an updated deficiency list from your walkers?
I have not been back through there for that.
It's your last month. Last last meeting we talked about.
We went out with. The park maintenance staff and kind of went through and showed them what they look at and they, I think you went through like twenty sites.
Yeah, we just, yeah, we did that. We didn't go back through the whole thing.
No, it wasn't a.
We're gonna take the rest of it and go with it.
And then did the uh park owner provide a timeline for mediation of deficiencies based on severity and responsibility of homeowner versus park owner?
They haven't, they they did hire somebody in the park to take care of things, so they're. They've been doing a lot, so I don't know. Haven't given a timeline, give a timeline as far as when everything's gonna be.
But I probably know the answer to this question then, but what's the updated timeline for freezing to go to the installation? Like so, kind of.
Is that hinging on us?
Yeah, so it's a little.
Hinging on us with what we want to do with that storm and stuff.
Place in the water, maybe.
One, right, but for the entire cheat of the park we had talked about last month, the uh.
November deadline?
Wasn't our November? He was gonna bring it back to us with the, what is the north to tail? How do we get the entire? Or when when is it gonna be done? Because it was supposed to have been done years ago and it's still not. So I would like to see this come back next month until we get that.
Okay.
Has anyone reached out to Keaton and touched base with him and where he's at with?
Yesterday would have been appropriate, it was his birthday. If you wanted to.
You know, as far as the whole park um. Street project, do we do that?
Alright. So I'll be back on it for next week for that. I don't know what it is right now.
I feel fine.
So thirty eight, update on municipal center punch list items.
I guess I forgot to put the PDF in here. Um. They were back, the painter took care of a lot of the um. Touch up spots. I know there's a lot of windows and over there that got taken care of, um so.
I know there's a huge piece of equipment in the park always, Roman drove it up there. Do you feel better?
Absolutely.
It's like a glove.
Yeah, and I saw that, yeah, it was pretty, quite quite amazing.
Husheng, did you get that meeting that you had asked?
I did not, I wasn't invited, so I'm sorry.
We still like that meeting.
I think we should. If you wanna get to the end of that punch list. That meeting is gonna help some.
Okay. So let's get Husheng invited.
Just write your own invite.
Yeah, there you go. Alright, yep, there you go. Thirty nine, update on Old Castle glass noise complaint?
So we've had officers who responded to noise complaints. I know Captain Hancock has met with Mr. Hoffman and been at his house. Gunnar Schultz has as well. Um I know I met with Mr. Hoffman. We've given the area actual patrols. I know a lot of times the complaints happen at night, so and as evenings, to transition evenings, uh we've broken out our. Digital sound eight nine two two decimal. Reader. Uh officers have parked at the intersection closest to um. Fifty one oh three Janus right on. On Corozella, shut the squad off and actually measured decibels. And uh just to give. I guess some ideas with noise levels. So one of these was taken from WebMD and the other was taken from OSHA. But uh like a silent study room is approximately twenty decibels. Leaves rustling, soft music is approximately thirty. Uh a soft whisper, which we actually tested the decimal meter sitting in an office approximately five feet away from each other. Readings are about forty to forty five. Uh talking at about this tone of voice is about sixty to sixty five. With that in mind, what we found was uh inside Hoffman's house. Uh there's a reading of approximately thirty seven to forty decibels in the far north bedroom. Uh we had a reading of fifty four to fifty six. Outside in front of the house. About fifty four to fifty six in front of fifty one oh seven Linda Street. About fifty eight to sixty on Corozella Drive. Uh at night, we had our highest readings. And that was around sixty five, which is about the level that I'm talking at right now. So with with that in mind, the officers described it, our, the body cameras did pick up the noise inside the residence. Uh described it as like a distant thunderstorm that you could hear. Uh looking at the ordinances for enforcement. Uh there were two that we were looking at. One was fifty point one oh three loud disturbing noises prohibited. Uh which states any mechanical noise which registered more than eighty five decibels for four consecutive hours. And we, we just, we don't have that yet. Um nothing's been that loud. Uh the other ordinance that we looked at was fifty point one hundred things prohibited, which says all loud discordant and unnecessary noises or vibrations of any kind. Which tend to cause or create disturbance. The issue we have with. Writing a citation under that ordinance is it's unnecessary noises and I believe the intent of this is more. Uh someone's working on their car in their driveway revving their engine, where they're creating noise with no purpose, whereas Old Castle Glass is going to argue. They are creating a noise, but they're creating it for a purpose. Um so we're gonna continue to monitor it. I ask that residents continue to call us because we're gonna continue to measure it. And if we have a violation, you will. Fight, but right now we don't have anything that we can enforce on.
How close is Scotty Havik's buildings on the backside? Touching, right?
They're closer to that.
Have we talked to anybody, Scotty Havik or Marsha or any of the tenants in there?
So Gunnar Schultz did.
Yeah.
Talked to a few residents, he drove around and many people are out in their driveways.
But but I mean, the the building on the backside, it's the, it's like an incubator.
The old, the old mill.
It's the old mill. The old feed mill? So Scotty Havik and his wife Marsha, they own all that and then they have. Uh separate storage, uh I know they have freezer, I know they have refrigeration in there. You know, maybe it 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 paid to just talk to some of those vendors that are keeping stuff they're stored. I know there's a couple companies that go in there at three, four in the morning. To get stuff out to go and sell, you know, to to leave and then I I don't know if if uh. Scotty is there a lot or Marsha or somebody, but I I know there's people there, just like the old Miller House, you know, the Miller House, they have an incubator or two. By Skonny's in Schofield there, so. Just a thought, okay? Alright. We'll see about that, yeah.
We asked Gold Castle to hire a. Air party engineering for. To go in there, they have.
And measure?
All kind of equipment, they can do a great job and give us a report. And we don't want that during the daytime, we want during the time. Which people complaining.
Do you ever hear?
I have not.
Not, okay, I mean, I I I've heard of the night, yeah, it's actually quite loud. It's for about forty five minutes, yeah.
Because it comes through the. Through the massacre. And it goes directly.
It it shoots right into me.
My, yeah, my only concern with that. I guess who's gonna foot the bill for that?
They have to do it because that's a problem. With them and I don't think it's a big bill to.
To that point though, I it doesn't sound like there's anything in our ordinance that can legally. Give us the right to look at them and say, you have to do this.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, so the wire rules in in their uh report to me was, you know, when Huffers was there, it was one level. And then there's been more built into the Old Castle glass. I don't, I don't know what it could be. I don't know. But they just said it's it's been louder over the years and what I hear is like a crashing or a. Uh um uh like a jet engine noise for about forty five minutes, that's actually extremely loud. Um and I just don't know if it's somebody else. I mean, I actually thought maybe it's something over at Scott, at Scotty Havik, so, yeah.
So this comes down to that, basically that email that I sent you guys before about the difference between public and private nuisance. So you would have to declare them a public nuisance in order to to go through that route. Residents always have the opportunity as a private nuisance to take. Anyone, their neighbors, whatever, to court on things. So if an individual property owner has an issue with something. They have the ability to do that too. So there's always that route.
You know, back on it in the twenty nine days when we had our snow plowing at night and the backup alarms came on. You know, the neighbors were just wild about that, but we couldn't do nothing about it. The backup alarms had to stay. But the the noise from our refrigeration, from our condensers. We sealed it that all to the east. And on two or three different racks, ju- you know, just to try to do something and it did deflect. Yeah, so.
I mean, to Jen's point, there's a comment in this um from Administrator Gabriel and Director Higgins that uh. They feel continued discussion of this, that the regular orbiting may not be appropriate, and I would tend to agree with that at this point. I think unless something, something changes drastically, I think I think our staff.
I I agree. I I think we should continue the conversations with the company. You know, just to kind of dial it down more and more, just to let them know. And um and see, I I would definitely have some chats with uh. Scotty Havik, cuz he he also might hear it too. You know, to a different, now that'd be to the west, right? Yeah. Alright.
Barb Ermeling here. Have a question. Crystal finishing. When they were having problems with them on um like. Maple and through there. We talked with them and they finally corrected their problem. And the people don't have the issue of the fumes anymore.
It's the fumes and and the the thrush of the exhaust coming out. They ended up extending those 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 stove pipes. Probably four or five times more than they were. If you go by there, you can see those those exhaust things that are, they've gotta go up twenty, thirty feet. And they were very small. So it 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 somehow it silenced it, it helped that part, but then the fumes. Also got it up higher and they don't, whatever that smell they were smelling. Is not happening, so.
Right, but I'm saying they did this because they wanted to appease the residents somewhat. In that area because they were complaining and I'm just wondering. If this glass company would maybe kind of work with the residents and trying to fix it.
Okay, I read the emails, they they sound very cordial when you guys have talked to them, people. Jim?
I would like to make a motion to direct the board president to create a subcommittee to further investigate this complaint and advise the board of trustees. A recommendation on how to proceed.
So above and beyond staff and the police. You wanna?
Staff and police could be involved, the the.
But you want another subcommittee from staff and the police now? You want?
You you to create a committee, I I trustee or two trustees and I'm volunteering for that committee. Have a dedicated group of individuals to check into this further, cuz there's not just one person in the audience, there's not just one person that's emailed. You get your house, I can get your at my house. It happens. Maybe it doesn't meet this threshold, but maybe there's some kind of a middle ground we can come to. Um I don't think it meets the eighty five decimal threshold. Um we we've proven that, I don't know how. Recently calibrated your equipment is, whichever, cuz you can argue that both ways, but.
How do we do that? We can't do that tonight, or can we do?
I was gonna say, we can't do it tonight because this is on here for update.
Alright, done. Let's, I'll get it done, okay? Alright.
Do you have a second on that motion?
Oh, uh motion by uh Pimpsonal?
We, it's not appropriate, it's not on here for possible action. It says update.
Okay. I review that. But I I think that's not a bad spot to kind of spearhead that a little bit and maybe not push it so much on planning or so much on the EMPD. Or future name of the EMPD, so. And have a couple more different. Uh personnel in there.
Okay. And to that point, I'm not saying that I'm not in support of that because I. I am, I just, if a committee handles it, that's fine. I just don't think it's something that needs to continue happening at this level.
And that was my intent, was to have the work happen at the committee and the committee says, hey, this is all we came up with, report it back to the board and now. Either act on it or close it.
So as long as I I guess can that come back next month? Okay.
Okay. Uh forty, update on police department. I think we've got some stuff further in the agenda, like that, right? Okay. Uh forty one, discussion and or action for temporary easement with A and R Pipeline Company. For additional temporary workspace and or staging area on part of parcel number one nine two. Dash twenty eight oh eight, dash two zero four, dash zero nine five four. By Zagami.
Second.
Second by Wyland.
Question.
Question.
Date is not immediate, is what? Thirty one, twenty thirty one?
Which, where are you looking at the date?
I'm looking for a date. Of that easement.
It would start as soon as signed and then it would go until twenty twenty six.
Yeah.
Yeah. What are they doing? Take that long?
They just wanna kind of hedge that if they have, if they need more time, they don't have to come back for another easement. Right, it it shouldn't take that long. They they just have some upgrades at the station and they just wanna make sure that they. Have their whole timeframe covered. Instead of, I don't, we do the same thing for.
Some video of the area before they start working on it. Yeah, so when they finish, they can put them back to bed.
Correct, yeah, and like they're required to restore as they found it. I mean, right now it's gravel. A little bit of sparse grass. I mean, we don't have anything. Else finished in that area.
It's too long, but.
Yeah.
Okay, that's for a future water tower, correct?
Correct.
My mind on that, impede our timeline.
No, um, once the Weston Avenue project's done and we get the south side looped there. And kind of seeing what our uh. Uh I guess what our borrowing looks like. I know uh last time Eller's ran it uh. Looks like we maybe needed to pause a little bit or. Push out some of the water utility projects, but with some of the PFAS funding, maybe we would be able to take it on. Twenty twenty seven, twenty twenty eight timeframe.
Um this came to us before and there were two things that were discussed then. One was. This sixteen hundred dollars has to, or whether the dollar amount is, has to cover our actual cost of attorney fees is this sixteen hundred dollars sufficient for that?
That's just. People pay when you, even we pay to the people when we ask for it.
I understand that, but I believe it was you, Husheng, that made the the comment of the the attorney's fees that are in here, in there, does that? Dollar amount cover our attorney fee?
That's correct, yes.
Correct my original question.
Yes.
Does the sixteen hundred dollars cover our attorney fees for this assessment?
It should, I mean, uh Attorney Ed did review the the easement and answered a couple questions, but with this. I mean, it was probably an hour's worth of time, so.
And then the other question I had is we had asked about. Uh the absolutely atrocious looking fence that's next door. That falls down regularly. I I get it, A and R isn't doing the fence, but these guys work together. Have there been any? Trashing on that of, hey, you, we'll let you come in here and do this, but can you please fix the fence while you're there?
We had a a conference call with them and expressed that and our understanding is also that they've taken a permit. And so there's a permit out to get that fence, correct it.
Thank you. Could we vote on that? Okay, anymore on the question? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Carrie, thank you. New business forty two, discussion and or action on president's appointments to committees and commissions. Alright, listen close. So we got John Evans resigning from the EMPD Police Commission. Uh but we're installing him on the Village Finance Committee. That's number one. That's number one. Uh Dan Verjean is being appointed to the probably a short life of the EMPD Commission. As a commissioner. Uh Jasper, uh I'm removing him uh from the HR Committee. And I'm pulling him off of the joint uh EMPD Finance Committee, okay? Those two right there for Jasper. On the HR side, for chairman, I'm would like to appoint Jim Pincenalt as chair. For the um HR Committee and I'd like to appoint Jamie Wyland on the Joint Finance EMPD Committee. Let me read that again or backwards or?
I I got it, but uh Jamie, would that be a a chair or vice chair or or no?
She would be one of the three people, she'd be along with myself, Jim Pincenalt and herself. And uh prior to a year ago, she was on there for two years. Yep.
No problem.
Yes, no, no problem. No, not at all, yeah. Alright, uh what's your pleasure?
Uh can I ask that, what's the way that you separate these into different chunks, different motions?
You want them in different motions?
I don't, yeah, you could take them as a slate.
I would like them as a slate.
Each each uh.
Slate is one at a time or all at once?
Slate would be all at once. If you if there was a request to do them separately, then you ask for separate motions.
What's the difference?
Do we need to do them separately? I mean, this this meeting is recorded. I think it was pretty clear.
You okay?
I I would ask for them to be done separately.
Okay. Well, let's not have a motion on that, so let's do it separately.
Have to, I think that's a.
I don't think we have to, but we're going along with that, so.
John, John?
Uh it just says updated, no, it says a discussion or action on president's appointments to committees or commissions.
That's it.
Uh I I'm actually gonna now pause because when we do them normally annually, I probably do fifty to sixty. All at one time, on one vote, and everybody says yea or nay to that. We have some discussion on that. The last time we had some discussion on tourism with Jamie, we had it featured there. So I I think we'd be in uh in past practice if we did this as a slate.
Mister President, can we just do the motion if somebody wants to pull one out, they can. Do that under discussion and that would be the idea of the board would decide if we wanted to.
Okay, but but with the normal uh April time when we do them all at once.
Agreed.
With that, hearing that, you still want them several.
I I just wanna pull the one to appoint Evans out.
Uh, oh, okay, hold on, alright.
All the others, I don't have an objection to it. That's the only one that I would not be able to.
I I understand now, okay. So uh my my, what I'm gonna be doing here separate, two different motions here. Is John Evans off of the commission. He resigned. Uh I'm gonna do Dan Verjean on the EMPD Commission. Uh Jasper Hardinger off of HR and I'm replacing him with Jim Pincenalt. Uh Jasper Har- Hardinger off of the Joint EMPD and I'm replacing him with Jamie Wyland. And right now, we're not filling the Village Finance uh Committee. We're gonna leave that one separate. So on that whole bundle. What's second there? Uh I, we need a motion.
Motion to approve.
By Cronin, second by Pincenalt. Any more in discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 All those so carried. Now, on a separate motion, um I'm appointing John Evans. Uh to the Village Finance Committee. What's your pleasure?
Motion to.
Motion to approve by Wyland, second by Cronin. Any more in the discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Nay, so noted. Um approved, so we have a five to one approval for John Evans on the Finance Committee. Alright, let's move on to forty three. Discussion and or action on additional appointments of election officials, Pam? Or Jamie? Who's got that?
Well, I put this on there because as of December thirty first, we are to name our election officials for the twenty twenty four.
Pause, we have a meeting tomorrow, um so any of these individuals that are not sworn in, she's sworn in already. We just switched and switched, but like Dan Verjean would have to come before the meeting and get sworn in.
Yeah.
Okay, I just wanna make sure I remember that. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Um so I uh we named the twenty uh they were appointed by the board. For the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five election year and we have the ability to appoint. Additional election inspectors for a single election after that due to temporary. Uh to vacant or temporary vacancy or an illness and when I'm doing my. Figuring what's going to happen for April two, I have some people that are not able to be in the election um. At the election officials that I have on my list, so I I have requested that some additional election inspectors be appointed.
Okay, that motion to approve by Cronin, second, second by Pincenalt. Any more in the discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Okay, uh the most waited for event of the night, forty four, discussion and or action on a live barn at Kennedy Park. Please, please, is this just for my amusement? What's happening here?
No, not really. Uh, sorry. Uh I mean, I could speak to it, Roman can speak to it, Mike can speak to it probably, but it is a live streaming service. That is attached to each baseball field at Kennedy Park. So they install for free. Um basically the requirement that. For us is to provide a IP address for them to be able to use the wifi at Kennedy. Uh but you can literally sit at home and watch game at Kennedy Park.
Okay, why do we use the word barn?
That's the brand name.
That's the brand name.
That's their.
I like that, yeah, alright.
So there's a list of some of the communities in Wisconsin that already utilize it.
I'm sorry, maybe a little bit more descriptive there, you know, let's just see what baloney says when he sees.
I I I thought I put a pretty good description.
I didn't call it on purpose, cause I wasn't gonna give you the satisfaction. I wasn't gonna do it.
So DC Everest already uses it, um they use it for hockey at uh BNEC.
I'm disappointed, where have I been, to stream in that is thinking I'm gonna see some baby chicks. See uh four. Going on. I go, whoa, whoa, wrong, wrong address, right? I mean, what? Oh my heavens.
You could probably buy that too, but.
What's your pleasure? What's your pleasure?
I, I have a couple of questions.
Can we get it on the floor? You're gonna do no? Okay, uh anybody wanna put this on the floor?
Yes, I'll move to prove.
By Zagami, second by, second by Wyland on the discussion.
Um so with us looking at the the Kennedy Park Master Plan. Is there gonna be any in costs that's incurred on the village in the future to relocate these when the whole, when all the ball diamonds get moved around? How do, how is that gonna work? Or is that gonna be on the youth baseball program?
I think Live Barn, when we, when we get those fields operational, they'll be more than happy to place the cameras on those new fields. There, I literally, they make all of their money off of uh a subscription based service for for the access.
So there won't be any costs incurred by us when we completely revamp that.
There shouldn't, there shouldn't be, and and the ones actually signing the contract is youth baseball and not the village.
Okay.
So if they sign the contract and all of a sudden you go from three fields to five fields. It would be youth baseball that's responsible for it, not the village.
What kind of dollars are we talking about?
That they're gonna make off of it?
No, no, no.
I think it's.
Just uh installation, how much?
It's free.
Free.
It's free.
That's that was my question.
Be free, okay.
Second question.
Whoa.
Sorry, if um we we have had some vandalizing, or I'm sorry vandalism and whatnot at that park. Whose whose responsibility is that gonna be if something happens?
That's a good question.
I would have to review the contract a little bit closer. Um it's in there, it's in the packet. Um.
I don't recall off the top of my head exactly. That's a good question.
I I I think that that should fall, I think that should fall on them. I'm I'm all for them putting it in, but I don't wanna be responsible for it if something happens to it.
Right. And you could make that a stipulation in as far as the contract, um that we review it and make sure that we're not responsible for. Except damage to the existing system they installed.
So I mean, it's something that we looked at when we did this flock with the police department. You know, cause any damage to those cameras, it's on them. Not on, even though we're renting, you know, thirty six hundred a year or something like that per camera. Yeah, did you have a question?
I did. Um this is for NADA actually. What what's the uh current internet situation at the park? Do we have sufficient bandwidth and IPs and LPs and element LPs to support all this?
Yeah, I was looking, trying to look at that. Um I I don't believe we have sufficient. Um I guess wifi throughout that.
Are are we getting any payback yet from uh TDS? I don't believe we are. I think when we we were supposed to get to a certain level, we gave them a quarter million dollars to to help get going here. And create a bunch of co- competition, which it most certainly did, almost a lawsuit from Spectrum. And um so TDS was supposed to, once we get to a certain level, they were supposed to pay us back to fifty grand for the next five years. So we could recoup our money. I doubt if it'll ever be there because we have people, like you call them cable cutters, or what do you call yourself?
Cord cutters.
A what? Yeah, no, no, you're not on cable no more. What do you call that? Cord cutter, yeah, yeah, so you know, you're not gonna subscribe no more, so we're probably not gonna get there. But couldn't couldn't we ask a favor? Hey, give you quarter million, we'll probably never get it back. Can you amplify this part for us?
Yeah, and we, I mean, maybe.
And it can hurt, you know.
Banner up on all of the fields.
Yeah, there you go. TDS is all over the place. Get some free wifi.
It was a tangent, um that we did have wifi throughout the park before, but we turned that off. When it created a loitering problem at the skate park.
A what problem?
Loitering?
Oh. Well.
And parents, and parents.
Yeah, well, well.
There's the pool, yeah, I'm not watching the kids in the pool.
Hey, ever gone to McDonald's? I mean, we we tell all our people on the road to go to McDonald's to get to get wifi so it costs less, you know. And if you look at McDonald's parking lot, there's people hovering there.
But we would have a secure connection that they could only use for the cameras.
Ah yeah.
It still wouldn't be public.
Okay.
It still wouldn't be public. They still need a password to actually.
Okay.
Get the cameras working. I think it was, was it a hundred megabytes per second is the requirement? It's it's in the packet, I'm sorry.
Per camera, right? You know, wifi connectivity is a huge deal.
Up town out. And we're doing like four hundred right now?
Live barn, we're done?
Yes.
And a vote, alright, so hearing no more discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Snake?
Yes.
Oh, uh Barbara, you yea or nay on the on the?
It, well, if it isn't going, we, I wanna have checked the liability as far as if there's vandalism.
Yeah, we'll we'll check that, okay. So, should we postpone the vote? No.
We just voted.
We just did, yeah, but I didn't know what Barbara, did you go yea or nay, Barbara?
I wanna go nay until I know what the liability is.
Okay. One, two, three, four, three, four to two. Carried. Thank you. Run the winning team.
But can we still get, can we still find out if we're liable for that?
Yes, yes, we will be doing that.
Yes.
Good question, good question. Forty five, discussion and or action on changes to Diamond One at Kennedy Park. We haven't even filmed it yet. Now we're gonna start changing it.
Uh so this is an item that was brought up a couple of years ago. There was a discussion that took place pre the Greenheart Community Center. Um we met with youth softball, we would move schools, youth baseball. Um we knew they were gonna lose a field there, which is the JV field. Um so they're looking for a location to. Utilize for softball. Um so twofold is. Converting Diamond One at Kenny for softball use, uh but also expanding for a larger baseball field. Which is just the infield, I'm not expanding fence or anything, it's just going from forty six. Sixty, which is the pitching and bases to a fifty seventy, uh but also making it all skinned infield. With no mound. Um so softball doesn't use a mound, they just use a pitching rubber. Uh and youth baseball would uh add a portable mound for youth baseball. Um so it's literally removing the grass infield. And then skinning the entire field and adding an additional ten feet of skinned area on the. Back edge of the current infield.
Okay.
I would to approve the village provide trucking to DC Everest. Uh fifty percent of the current DOT rates for all personnel and equipment needed.
So you you're saying that you're, we're not gonna cut, what are you asking?
He's he's saying that we're not gonna truck it for free, but we do fifty percent of the current rate DOT rates. So the village contribution to redoing the. Field was to do the trucking and care of the two zones of irrigation. Which you got, obviously. Um so the proposal was for the village to provide the trucking to get the. New infield material here and he's saying we should do it at fifty percent of the rate. The current DOT.
Really lost.
Instead of eating the entire cost because youth baseball and um DC ever school the shook has. School has provided ten thousand dollars for this. Uh rehab and then youth baseball is gonna pick up the remainder.
What's estimated cost on our on our trucking?
Uh I don't have the estimated cost, but it was, it was eight, eight loads. Um so, you know.
Okay.
Twenty twenty, twenty tons of load.
So that, so that's your motion.
That's his motion is to do it at the fifty percent rate.
Yeah, or is it not?
You just calculated the number.
So eight loads is not much.
So our rate through Pakistan Solutions to haul it here for us was three hundred dollars a truck. That didn't include the material, that was just truck.
So that's it?
And we're, and round trip is about uh two hours per truck.
And we're given, we're giving the material for free?
Uh no, they're purchasing.
They are purchasing the material.
They're purchasing.
Okay, so we have a motion for half uh, Pincenalt, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second it, alright, so we have a um now on the discussion? Any more in the discussion?
I I guess my question on this, and I'm I'm totally in favor of supporting youth baseball here, but. With, again, to sound like a broken record, with the changes at the park coming up, is now the best time to spend the money doing this?
Well, we know the changes to the park are gonna be phased. We don't know exactly when they're gonna happen. It's a minimal investment, really, to some extent. Um with the contract with field excavating and the ball diamond material being trucked here, we're just over ten thousand. That's about the village be doing it. Um so the installation part is the part that used to take place yet. And then serves.
The large reason for it is actually to benefit the school district. So that's, that's, baseball actually has a very minimal upside to it. Um because we prefer to use a dirt or a grass infield and a real mount, okay, so. Um baseball has been working with high school softball to really partner. You know, over the last year and they don't have a field for JV.
Right.
This is going to be their JV field. So prior to to getting, you know, the new fields at Kennedy. They they need someplace to play this spring. So that was the big. I'm I'm I will not vote in for this, for for the reason during COVID. Um the school district was here, you know, decontaminating and and using their stuff to clean our our building. They funded the police all the way through when there was no school. And there's just a huge partnership here in this community, that surrounding communities. You know, to put up a thirty five million dollar building at no taxpayer, no school, it's a big deal. And so I I think it'd be a small part for us to. So that's my point of view. We have a motion and a second on the floor. Um all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
No? No, no, okay, so we've got a six people here, right? Uh and it's a three, three, so it fails on a tie. Okay.
Can we make another motion?
Go ahead.
I move to approve the changes to field number one at Kennedy Park to allow it to be used for both baseball and softball.
Uh by.
Presented.
By Cronin. Second by.
Second.
By Wyland. Uh anymore on the discussion?
Yes, how will it be funded? One hundred percent. Well, how does the funding break down? That's my question.
Fair point. Anybody have any ideas?
I have no, I I, my original motion, I have no objection to changing the layout. I think we should. I think that's the right thing to do. It's a neighborly thing to do. I think it's absolutely terrible planning. The school knew that building was going there two years ago and to wait until fifteen minutes before the season starts to say. Oh, yikes, we don't have anywhere to play.
Well, I I wouldn't, I wouldn't characterize it that way.
Can we, can we use tourism dollars?
Yeah.
I mean, it does, it does, these tournaments and stuff that we have there do draw in people from across the region. On the weekends, in the summer, so.
I think the the cost is just our staff time of trucking the material and using our fuel, so I think that. Unless we reimburse the general fund, I I don't know.
In the course of things, it it is, it's just the time is used right during the day.
Just taking for more pocket.
Yep.
They're not really.
But we, yeah, we we can't take it out of tourism because tourism. Is where you've got people staying in the hotels and generating income and these do not. Do that or does by such a small amount, it would not justify it. If we're gonna do it, just do it.
Yep, okay, so anymore on the question? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 So carried, uh five, one.
Uh, excuse me, um, can I ask who the third Noah's on that first motion?
It was Barb and, um, yep, Barb and.
Yeah, I got the other.
And then now it's just Jim.
Just Jim. Okay, thank you very much.
Just Jack. Okay, I like that show. Alright, um, let's see, Kennedy Park, uh, forty-six, discussion interaction on playground equipment removal and disposal.
So the recommendation that came out of the park committee in January was to put all the playgrounds, current playgrounds up on a Wisconsin surplus auction, so the village would have no cost in removal or disposal. And it didn't matter if it was a reusable one or if it was one that should be disposed. Based on the minutes and the um action taken.
That's what the park department decided?
Through the park committee.
Committee, I mean, I'm a committee.
I believe there were three that you didn't recommend.
There's three we didn't recommend, but it was still, the the action was still to put them out for auction, so they could bet a dollar on them.
So you can use it for scrap.
But they could scrap it. They could do the removal and scrap it and still make money off of it.
Work or whatever.
Do we have to touch them and stuff? I mean.
Well, that would be us doing nothing.
Nothing.
That would literally be.
I'm fine.
Putting it all on, I will sign contractor to, you know, put in a proposal.
I have a couple of questions before we.
Can we get on on the floor, please?
Motion to deny.
Motion to deny by Cronin. Is there a second? Is there a second? Is there a second? Hearing none, uh, looking for another motion?
Prove the sale of all playground equipment, structures and related items which need to be removed to facilitate installation of previously approved replacement playground items in late twenty twenty-three.
By Pincel?
Uh, stand by. Auction price is to start at one dollar for each item. All playground items should be removed by the same date. Once an install date is scheduled, a hold harmless agreement would need to be signed by the winner of the auction.
Second.
Motion by Pincel, second by Wyland. Uh, question.
So I guess the reason that I am not in favor of this is because if we do this, we lose control over when these come down. And when I I talked to you a couple of weeks ago, and we didn't have a timeline yet for the playgrounds. Now, I we're gonna do six playgrounds at once. What I don't wanna see happen is we have, if we go with Jim's motion here, all of this equipment is removed by a sole date, and then and then what? We have to sit for two, three months with no playground equipment in the village before they come in and do it. And and the other, the other part of that is when I, when I spoke with you, it sounded like they were gonna come and maybe do two, two different structures and then leave, go do something else and come back a few weeks later. I just don't wanna see our village without playground equipment for an extended period of time in the summer. And if we do it ourselves, we have control over that.
Okay.
Um, I take care of the Wisconsin surplus stuff for.
You just, can you just state your name and and address for record?
So anyways, you can put when when you place the auction on Wisconsin surplus, you can put, uh, must be removed by this certain date, otherwise you forfeit the item. And that's probably what you would have to do to get it out and removed by the date that you want.
So we would stagger the.
Stagger the dates so that park A is done on this date, park B is on this date, park C is removed by this date. The other thing to that or other other part to that or comments I have on that is we have two schools, elementary schools in the village of Western. We have playground equipment, excellent playground equipment that can be used. We also have neighbors right next door with fantastic parks. And I assure you, they probably would encourage our residents to come and check out their parks. And you know what? We're gonna encourage them and everyone in central Wisconsin to come check out all the great parks that we have in twenty twenty-five. Our twenty twenty-four parks are gonna be terrible. It's gonna be construction zone. The twenty twenty-five is gonna be fantastic.
To that point, what happens if we put a date on it and the plate, the the equipment's not removed? And we, our our company that we've hired to do this now has to push their dates back.
They don't, because we already have in the contract that they're removing it. So if they show up and there's nothing to remove or there's less to remove, they they pay less to remove it. What will the, if you can clarify?
I think what Steve is saying is if they don't remove it by the set date, then the village still has to do the work. And we have a press timeline to do it because we have a set deadline, but if they don't do it, who's gonna remove it then? The village will.
With Brian then would have to get coordinated appropriately so that there's enough time. So even if no one came to pick up their merry around, Brian would still have time to get his crew out there.
Right.
But if they pay a dollar for it, they may say, hey, we can't do it.
Yep.
And then it hurts the village to some extent because we still have to do it.
So to that point, what if we give ourselves partial control? Wh- what's the difference if we scrap the equipment that needs to be scrapped versus we auction it and someone else scraps it? Maybe we just auction off the three that are viable, that can be salvaged, and then keep control of the other three for ourselves so that we have, we give ourselves some leniency if they get here and something's not done on time.
And that's the other part of it. So they are shipping all seven playgrounds at one time. So they'll all seven pieces of playground equipment, all seven park locations will be shipped here at the same time. That was part of saving the shipping costs. So we'll have all seven here. So when they show up to do install, we could dictate to some extent which one they're installing. Versus them saying, well, this is our timeline. This is what we told you. We could actually set the timeline to some extent when they do it.
And we would, we would scrap those three. We wouldn't just throw them in a dumpster, correct?
Right, so all steel is recyclable, all plastic is recyclable. So I mean, steel, obviously, there's money available as far as scrap steel. Plastic would be, we may have to pay to some extent to get rid of it.
The cost of your operator, though, i- i- if it's a money-making venture.
The equipment operator.
What it costs to to run equipment, men and women out there.
And we and we knew that scrapping it.
So we got a motion and a second on the floor. Are you ready?
Can I make an amendment to your motion? So I would make an amendment to put the three viable play structures on Wisconsin surplus and remove the three that are not viable at this point in time from that list.
What, excuse me, what do you do with this Wisconsin surplus?
What do I do with it?
Yeah.
Um, as far as, you know.
Yeah, I I just didn't know, are you?
He's the lead manager for the village.
Well, I I knew I knew you faced. You're here for this surplus place? What the hell? Do you see an issue with this? Do you see this not happening?
It's gonna be difficult to get everything removed. You you probably will, in reality, will ever when they're taking.
Alright.
Some of the equipment out, but.
Okay, alright, so do your amendments.
So I I would, I would like to amend Jim's motion to only list the three viable play structures um as outlined on Wisconsin surplus.
Something you'll consider?
Will not.
You will not? Okay. Jamie, no?
I'll second it.
Oh, that's where we are?
Yep, she can second you.
Okay, so motion by Cronin, second by Barbara.
To amend the motion.
To amend the motion. Uh, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay.
Nay? Okay, so motion dies. Now back on the original motion by Pincel, Wyland, uh, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay.
Alright, we have a five-one, so carried. Right, let's move on here. Uh, forty-seven, discussion interaction on recommendation from the Human Resources Committee on proposed job description and funding for new staff engineer position in Public Works Department. With your pleasure?
Both approve.
By Zagami? By Wyland? Any more in the discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Now we're moving. Forty-eight, discussion and our action on recommendation from the Human Resources Committee on Amendments to Public Works Job Descriptions. Director of Public Works, Fleet Foreman and Mechanic.
To approve amended job descriptions for Director of Public Works, Fleet Foreman and Mechanic.
By Pincel, second by Wyland. Hearing no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
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 So carried. Forty-nine, discussion and our action regarding a joint agreement establishing the Rothschild Joint Municipal Court.
Motion to approve.
By Ermeling?
Second.
Second by Zagami. A- all those in favor?
I don't think that we want a motion this evening. We might have some changes to the agreement, but we wanted to make, yeah.
I don't think it's even on here for action.
I said no action.
So discussion and or action?
Oh, it does. I didn't, I was looking at the.
The the RFC.
The RFC.
Yeah. So th- this evening, I think we wanted to introduce and make sure that you were familiar with the agreement. We might have a couple of changes that come down from the district court administrator. And those would come in.
Can we blaze through this and get this done and then in good faith and get it done after that? What's somebody gonna do?
Well, i- i- it is moving ahead. Um, yep, if I can just pass out one thing, it'll kind of.
State your name and address for record.
Uh, Ryan Vanowell, Village Administrator for Rothschild, two eleven Grand Avenue, Rothschild.
In Rothschild? Oh, okay. I'm sorry, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Ryan totally lives in the village.
I want the board members to see this one. So this goes hand in hand with the agreement. Did you guys have a chance to look at the agreement first of all? Are there any questions before I, this this tied right into it? Are there any questions that you guys have with it? Okay, so the actual agreement, Jamie is correct, so not necessarily that we're looking for an action per se tonight. Uh, it's Mark's point, yes, it is moving along quite well. Um, what this really would establish is the uh, the joint court between what you're seeing here, the six communities in A one. And right now, the village of Rothschild currently has the village of Edgar and uh, the village of Marathon City that's currently with our joint municipal court. Uh, this will be adding again the three departments or three municipalities that you're seeing here. There is, again, there's gonna be a couple of different stipulations uh with the Ninth Judicial Court. Um, really nothing major. Uh, but I do wanna focus if whoever's in control of it, they can scroll down to, I believe it's page number three. Uh, hold on, do you have it, Michael?
Yeah.
Let's talk about where it's highlighted first. So, uh, under H, the salary of the municipal judge will likely change. If this is something that does take place, uh, we're under the assumption that the twelve thousand dollar yearly salary that the individual is currently receiving for the village of Rothschild would change. Uh, so that's, that's one, that's why it's highlighted. And then, Michael, if you can come down to the next portion right here, so under L, or court financials, uh, this will be the only other, this is your one-time upfront cost. So it lays out in here, uh, what municipalities are expected to pay when coming into a joint venture, a joint municipal court. So the village of Edgar, along with the village of Marathon City, again, have already paid their upfront costs. Again, this is more of administration costs. This will be, you know, updating the letterheads, making sure that everything is sufficient, uh, business cards, you know, stamps, those sorts of things. Uh, and so what you're seeing in L, that is a one-time fee. Uh, let's say this happens in two thousand and twenty-four, twenty twenty-five through twenty fifty-five, you're not paying that cost again. It's a one and a. Um, so again, that's the joint court. What you have in front of you relates back to the actual court agreement. The reason why it relates back, so can draw your attention to two things. Uh, everything will be consistent with what you have here and will come back in March for final approval. Uh, however, the the section, or excuse me, the state statute symbol, where it's the two S's that essentially overlap. Uh, the individual who is overseeing this, um, her concerns with that symbol is that it does not necessarily reflect back to an actual state statute. So, you know, what you're seeing here is the village of Rothschild ordinance, just like the village of Westwood Avenue's port ordinance. That's a state statute symbol. Uh, her issue is that it doesn't relate back to an actual state statute. You guys, as well as I, know that these ordinances are all established the same way, whether using municipal code, E code, those sorts of things. So I'm not concerned with that, and I I think we'll get her over that total speed bump. Uh, and and secondly, really what you're seeing here, uh, under twenty-six dash three election interim municipal judge, again, it relates back to this because the actual judge that you're seeing here, and I believe it was H, um, this individual, yes, is elected to a four-year term, and really the individual that's that's reviewing this document, her main concern was making sure that we had the term spring election in there. Other than that, what you're seeing here is likely what we're gonna bring back to, uh, the village board, uh, in March. And I just got all this this afternoon, so that's kinda why we're getting it hot off the press. But are there any questions, I guess, with, I have an answer?
How many other people are here beside the judge?
As in like staff?
Yeah.
So we have a a thirty-hour-per-week court clerk, and there's also another individual that, uh, is a deputy court clerk, and she can help out, whether it's forty hours a week, ten hours a week, her her schedule is more fluctuating. So essentially, there's two staff, one that's more permanent, one that would be part-time or filler or sub, or however that would work.
So is that staff enough for the three other municipalities coming in? So you have to increase your.
We do believe that staff would be enough.
Yes, we feel sufficient that the staffing level would be enough.
Enough, the additional three municipalities.
That's correct. Yep.
Thank you.
Hold off till March?
Hold off till March.
Okay.
Appreciate the enthusiasm.
Sounds good. Yes, very. Okay, thank you, Ryan, for the motion and the second, though. Yeah, we're gonna have to just pull him back.
Whoever made that motion, could they just withdraw?
Yep, and I thought that was wishing him. Oh, Barb, Barb, yeah, we're gonna just withdraw that, Barb?
Yes, I will withdraw my motion.
Thank you.
To March.
Second.
And you second, okay, so they're both withdrawn, withdrawn till March. Alright, uh, the the news is, fifty, thank you. Discussion and our action regarding policy on board of trustees information requests. Um, that, that's something I had put on here, and um, I I think with the Robert's rules of orders that we're bringing into into play here, I think how we wanna do this, and I am just as guilty as others, is when we want something requested other than at a board night, our request should be going to our administrator. And our administrator will then, uh, you know, um, however you wanna do, schedule that out to the to the department or to the department, director of the department. Um, I I don't work well with more than a boss. I don't, I sometimes don't work well with a boss. So, uh, I would not like to have two or three or four, you know, calling. And and I I was watching some of the emails, just, you know, from the start of when, uh, our administrator started. And a lot of times, you know, including me, I wasn't including her. Today, I called Nate today and talked to her, and I told him it was gonna be the last time I'm gonna do it. But, um, Jennifer, I did, I called you today. I didn't tell her I was not gonna be last time, so God, here I am. So really, I should have a mirror and just talk to myself. But anyway, so I I think we need to do a better job with the communication and have our requests on on an off twenty-nine, thirty days a month going to our administrator. And then we'll expect, uh, answers back from our administrator, uh, back and forth and questions. And, uh, and I, and I think it's also important, when you send the request to the administrator, that it's, it's that the administrator and only. And don't, don't set up, don't tee the ball up and already have the director in there. Let our administrator handle that, okay? And I I would hope you all agree. I know Barb will agree. Uh, you've been asking about this for a long time, and I have been listening, um, but it it's time. So I I would, uh, behoove the board to act in that fashion. Um, you can certainly be rolled if you want. I just won't talk to you. So, uh, anyway.
How would this apply for, um, chairs of committees?
Okay.
What's your, what's your, I mean, is there an idea there?
Well, I think if you're trying.
I work with Jen on on the plan commission agenda, so I don't know if that would be the one exception or.
No, I on that, you work with Jen on that, but you always have Jamie included, always. So the.
If it's, yeah, if it's dealing with the, working with staff on the agenda, that's your your job, your duty as chair of that committee. But my concern, and I have talked to Mark on this, is we had board members, I mean, all seven of us could be asking for information from individual people, and it's putting a strain on them. It always should go to the administrator, and she would take it from there.
So even on, even on, let me just ask Jamie this. So even on, uh, agendas items, just to kinda, so that you're not just bouncing all over the place, do you want it to you and you only? Or would you wanna be copied in with the department head, the chair of the committee and you?
For agenda items where you're the chair, I would say copy in.
Okay, good. I I just think that would be a a better sense of time, cuz you'd be, you'd be doing nothing but just, you know, ratcheting all over the place. So, okay, I think that's.
Yeah, that, yeah, that's what my, I was saying, that that's the chair and the the department head would work on the agenda, and then the, um, you know, the administrator would just be co- copied in.
Yeah, I don't, do you think we need action on that? I don't think we do. Or do you?
Um, I'll move that the administrator draft the board member information request policy.
Okay, by Cronin?
Second.
And by Ermeling, uh, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Fifty-one, discussion and or action on security of village assets and personnel, including review of the identification badges, keys and access cards policy. Jim? Is that yours or whose is this?
It was just a memo in the packet that it's, we've been about a year in the building with the new technology, and we do have the acknowledgement, um, forms for the identification badges. acknowledgement um, forms for the identification badges, we had everyone complete that tonight, but we again, just a periodic review to see, are there things that we're missing or we wanna add to the policy? We also, again, I think in the interim of, of administrators, um, I'll take over that if these policies are implemented. How to get them into the handbook and then get that onto the website. So this one was maybe caught a little in the interim, and it didn't get into the handbook and onto the website, which that'll be handled now.
So discussion, or discussion and action, no action discussion?
I have discussion.
Okay, go ahead.
First, cross training on the operation system, I think that's an excellent idea, I don't know if we had that before implemented, but I see that's happening not just here, but in other departments, that's fantastic. Uh, on page four fifteen and sixteen of the packet. Um, it references a building manager and property manager, I think we used to have two separate positions, two separate titles. They're not one, right?
Were we talking about that tonight? Were we talking about, um.
We have a property, we have a property inspector.
Then Steve, I now have, let's talk, didn't I walk in on that discussion?
Uh, that was a little bit different.
Okay.
There.
All right, that's fine.
So it, it talks about uh, facility keys will be issued on direction of property manager. But then somewhere it talks about building manager too, on this same page, on the next page. If they're the same person, that's fine, but let's just use the, this, yeah.
The same term.
The same term, right, exactly, I think that we did. When Teacher was here, there was two very similar titles between you and him, right? Yeah, I mean. Was it property manager and? I don't know where the property manager came from, we, that, actually, that verbiage should not be.
It's, it's there.
Yeah, but it's, it is in there, so it's, it's definitely something that should be cleaned up, for sure. What does the village uniform consist of? It's called out, is it called out somewhere else in the handbook, or uh, it's, it's on this? Turns out here, but should that be modified to state village, village of Weston and Boston shirts, jacket or safety vests clearly visible to a reasonable person? We, we got a staff member in the audience here that some of us know, some of us don't know. I'm not gonna name any names, but um. Right?
Under your car.
Is, is, so, that's a perfect example, right, so the idea is to, to know if you belong here or not. It's public comments, so that you're obviously welcome and encouraged to be here. Trevor Skurman and Lee Romanowski's key key fob identification badge, have they been collected? Awesome. The, we spent a pile of money integrating electronic access into this building, so you can see who was coming and when. Um, I would like to see language added into this, since we, we gotta go through it and change some other stuff anyways. To encourage the use of the electronic keys to enter all secured doors and gates, unless doing so is not physically possible due to a malfunction with the system. Or in a restricted area, which access is only able to be granted by a physical key such as confined space, confidential file room, et cetera.
Initial opening or throughout the day?
Anytime you enter the door.
Yeah, I, well, I know, but how do you do that when the door's open? If the door is open, I don't have to enter, I don't have to.
If the door is open, then it's open.
I know, but you're, you're looking for identification of who's coming and going, so.
If, if you're entering the building with a key, it should be an electronic key.
Okay, but if I'm entering and the door is open, cuz we're open for business, I can then commit.
Then you can come in.
Okay.
Do all of your employees come into the front door?
And then, and then here's another one.
Don't, I, I asked about that, and I actually got.
That's fine, that's fine, so I, I come in at night to let myself in, but there's no way of letting myself out electronically. Cuz that, that, that's a tough one, it's a tough one in our company too, we don't know when people are leaving. You know, so we have to either camera or just assume that at a certain point in their shift they left. So I mean, if we're kinda trying to really dial down on this hard, there's a whole number equation is how long are they in the building?
I, I think my concern on that is not necessarily.
And then I have a hard key, do I have to give it up?
I didn't get that far yet.
Okay.
But I would say no. Um, I, I, my, my intent with that ask is that the, the, we shouldn't have put phys- electronic keys in here just to have electronic keys, there was a reason for it, if the reason was not to document access to the building. I, what was the reason for it? I wasn't on the board at that time, can anyone speak to that?
It's a good one, because you know, you want it on there, it's the new and the, the best thing, you know, it's uh, it's putting a hundred thousand dollar generator on here where the other building didn't have one. But I'm walking in with four other employees, and I'm coming through the side door cuz we all parked farther down there, so we, we have obviously resident parking up front. Uh, but now, uh, Renee holds the door open cuz she uses her fob, does she now shut the door and all of us have to enter with our fob? Or can all four of us come in with the door held open for us?
An excellent discussion point for the board, or do all four move in, even the door is physically open?
Will all of our access points have cameras?
Mister President? May I, yes, one of the reasons that we went with electronic opening is because when uh, an employee is dismissed or fired, whatever, we can just void his ID card without having to change the locks on all the doors.
Okay.
To that point, to that point though, how many people have keys? Do, do all of our employees also have actual keys? Or do they all have key fobs?
That's for a physical key audit, we're still working on it, I think.
Yep, and we're from a previous conversation, we are gonna start to pull back those physical keys. So, I, there will still be physical keys around, but we're gonna start to pull those keys back, if they're not necessary, Roman is gonna be collecting them.
I agree, you know, in, in, in our situation here, and I, you know, I don't know what level, maybe in finance, you'd wanna have heart, hi- higher security. But in, in our facility where, where I work on my daytime, it's food, so if you come in, you can't, all four of you have to scan. That's just absolute, you can't walk in with somebody else, you, and you, you know you have to scan. So, but I don't believe we have to do that here, that's just not, that's not where we are, it's not our level. So, I, I think sometimes we put so much into this, and then, I, I get your point, Jim, but there's so many loopholes to it sometimes. It's, I think Barb has a valid point, I think not having to, to change that key all the time and have a locksmith here, and you can, you can change the fob. You can still be here, but you can restrict doors to that person, and they can't get in unless somebody else lets them in, so that's another nice feature too. So.
Well, that was part of the reason.
Okay, how much more?
One.
Okay, go ahead.
Keys of vehicles, toolboxes, padlocks, you need to reference those items in the policy, just says the word key. Obviously, all of our cars and trucks have keys, I, I don't know if your toolboxes have keys, I don't know how that works.
I think you need to start at the hardest area, and the hardest area would be the mechanics area. And I, I think that sets the tone, if you're not locking up your tools and, and it's, it's open, then I don't know what, where else it pays. Are we leaving uh, keys in the equipment?
We do, yeah.
Okay, do you have equipment outside?
No.
Okay, so that's a huge deal, that's a, that's a great deal. You know, so in our company, we have three hundred semis sitting outside with every key as in every one of those semis. Go ahead, take a run, have a blast, if we, there's cameras in them all, so, but I, I still don't agree with it, but you know, it's, it's, it's what we do. So ours are enclosed, so that's good. I think, but I would start at the mechanics, because.
I think this policy should be geared more towards the building itself, and not all of our individual vehicles.
And then access areas of the building.
And that's fine, I would just, it doesn't say that, it says village employee key policy. So a key to that utilities van, or a key to that toolbox, or a key to that toilet paper dispenser. All falls under, under that policy, I mean, I'm sure Attorney Ed has an opinion on that as well, but.
Uh, do not ask him. Uh, if we're close to being done here, otherwise we should take this to maybe an invite into the, with staff and try to figure out the rest. Okay?
You bring that next month or whatever.
Yeah, okay, let's see where we get. Uh, let's see, fifty two, discussion and or action on Ross Avenue, River Ben Road, do we need to take fifty one and move it physically? Push it to next month, is that necessary? Are we gonna move fifty one to next week, next month?
We can, we can have it on next month.
Okay, all right.
We need to make a motion.
Look to defer action, item fifty one, oh.
Second by Cronin, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried, fifty two, discussion and or action on Ross Avenue, River Ben Road, Paul's Avenue, engineering design proposals.
Move to approve contract with Becker Poppy for an amount that exceeds three hundred and forty five thousand, seven hundred and fifty, as presented in the pack.
By Pincel? Second by Wyland, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
So carried, fifty three, discussion and or action on development agreement amendment for plat- of Hinner Springs, first edition, phase two.
Motion to approve.
Like, what?
Sorry, we just have one thing to discuss with this before approval, I'm not sure if.
Get it on the floor first.
Second.
Yep, so by Cronin, second by Pincel. Now, discuss.
I'm not sure if um, the developer or any of the um, individuals that are involved with the plat- are online, I don't think they're here this evening, but.
I don't believe so, you know.
And we're on earlier, but I don't see them on anymore.
So the, the question that has arisen is the, the piece regarding uh, the security of the development. Uh, in the we ask that there is a, either a letter of credit or a performance bond that is provided. A performance bond was provided, but it doesn't cover the parameters that are outlined within this agreement. The performance bond is with the contractor, um, Attorney Ed is here in case I state this incorrectly. But it would secure the contractor, but would not secure the village for having the work completed. So there's, um, the developer has asked if the village would still accept that bond because of the cost to otherwise provide a, a different type of security, the, the.
Which would be about fifteen thousand dollars, I think. Right, and, and are we doing, are we, are we asking more in phase two than phase one?
No, we are not asking more.
We're asking the same thing.
It's the same.
So is, is he performing less on phase two than phase one? Is he, did he change his language with his bond? Have I seen that right?
Well, in phase one, a letter of credit was provided, in phase two, a bond.
Just a bond with the.
Can I, can I ask how much isn't being covered? I mean, you said there's a discrepancy, so what's?
No, it, it would cost him more to do the letter of credit, right?
Correct.
Do you remember, Matt? Was it like fifteen grand?
The issue is this, okay, there, there's a payment bond that the contractor has.
Yep.
Right, the bond says though, that it doesn't apply if the developer doesn't pay the contractor. So you're not in any better position than you were otherwise. Now, he needs a, you know, he could get a payment bond maybe, that would ensure that he's gonna pay the contractor. Then the performance bond would be triggered if the contractor didn't perform. But the bond that we have, the performance bond, is only good if the developer pays the contractor and doesn't breach the construction contract, so it doesn't do you any good.
So we're asking, that, we're asking the same thing in phase two that we accepted in phase one?
No.
Oh, no, phase one he has.
That's what I'm saying, so we're asking just for the same thing.
Correct.
We're asking the same thing in phase one, but it's not being offered in phase two, pushing?
Who's hiring the contractor?
Danyan is the developer.
Yeah.
Village has no responsibility, because the contractor gonna go to contract with the owner of the land or developer. And if he doesn't pay the bill, they can't come to us, why they should come to us, because we are not part of the project.
Right. Right, but we, we wanna make sure that public improvements get completed.
That's a bonding comp- I'm sorry, I interrupted you, but that's a bonding company responsibility to come and finish the project.
But they're not going to do that if the subdivider doesn't have the money to pay the contractor. So the point is, is if, if the, if the subdivider doesn't pay the contractor, work doesn't get done. And there's no bond to ensure that the work gets done.
You're correct, yes.
So, are, are you just, are you just recommending that he goes and gets a different performance bond, is that all you're saying?
If he can get a, if he can be added to the bond so that they can remove the exception.
He will not do that, he did check with that and that.
There is something, I think, called a payment bond, yes, that, that he could get, which would ensure that he makes the payments to the people that do the work, uh, and then that would satisfy the surety bond to make sure the contractor finishes the job.
So we would be asking Danyan to add a payment bond to the current performance bond?
Or get a letter of credit?
Yeah, the letter of credit is gonna be the preferred one, right, but if he comes up with a payment bond that meets the terms, that you know, uh, satisfy our ordinance, then we could, we could consider that.
And either one is more money for him.
Yes, and.
But he did it in phase one.
He did the letter of credit.
Yep, yep, which costs more.
Every contract has a payment.
Yep.
I'm going to rescind my motion.
Okay.
And.
You rescind it?
Went through my second, yeah.
Okay, so, I will make a new motion to approve the recommended development agreement terms contingent on the village attorney's approval of the security and the developer obtaining either a payment bond or a letter of credit. And authorize execution of development agreement by village president and village clerk.
Second? Motion by Cronin, second by Pincel, any more on the discussion?
Yes.
Go ahead.
The contractor has to have a payment bond.
Okay, that's fine, so we're in agreement.
He has to.
We're in agreement to the motion, yep, okay, right, that's what you said.
Right.
Yep.
But no, no, that's not what you said.
Or a letter of credit, which you said he gave originally for phase one, right?
Yep.
And we were okay with that?
Yes.
Michael?
So, the, the, the contractor does have a payment and performance bond for their work like we would require for a public works project.
Then that's, that's, that's good.
Just to answer that question.
The developer doesn't have.
The developer doesn't.
We need one for developer.
The one, but he's gonna give the.
And you're doing two options, a letter of credit or a payment bond?
Or payment bond.
Yep. Okay, so that's the motion, that's the second, are we on, any more in discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carried. Uh, discussion and or action on surplus auction items, God, is this like deja vu or what? I thought we got done with that, different address.
Different one?
Okay.
So, yeah, these are more the, kind of the surplus items from uh, cleaning out the garage, uh, the outbuildings at the other building. And then also includes the outbuildings at fifty five hundred, um, Schofield Ave. So, uh, I guess a big question we had, um, you know, for our ordinance, we're supposed to give a value uh, to the board to kinda approve that that's what uh, we believe we'd get for those items, like such as a truck or a forklift. The part we, as staff, don't really have a good handle on is if there is a minimum bid or amount that the board would want on any of the outbuildings. Or if we just wanna put these out there, and if somebody wants to pay us a dollar and take it down, we're good with it.
Yeah.
So, um, we can set a minimum reserve on any of these, if we want to.
So in order for discussion, I move to the clarity above property, looks, the above property surplus to include all buildings remaining property, above ground infrastructure, furniture, fixtures, as you were, above ground infrastructure less that of the sewer and water utility, furniture fixtures at the fifty five hundred property, and authorize staff to sell and dispose of those items via Wisconsin surplus auction.
You showed trucks and tow motors under, is that also part of this?
Yeah, so, so that is part of our.
Maybe. Above property, that's that.
Administrator Gabor, um.
Your second? Second by Wyland, so, motion by Pincel, second by Wyland.
Before we vote on this, can we, I, I almost think this would be, it would be prudent for us to table this until after closed session, cuz we do have an I, an agenda item in closed session tonight regarding um, the sale of that property, I don't, we don't know how that's gonna go, we haven't discussed it yet.
But it would only, it, it would only constitute the buildings itself.
My, my understanding is that, that um, offer is contingent on the property as it sits right now.
So, do we make this motion on this one on all movable items, not buildings?
I would be fine with that, I think we should wait on the buildings until we have a chance to.
We can amend it.
I'm, I'm only talking just the buildings, so that if somebody comes in and buys that property, it's their choice what they wanna do with the buildings. You know, move them, dismantle them.
I move to postpone the motion until after closed session.
Will you?
Second.
Second, okay.
Like four times I use this.
So that's where we are. Uh, let's see, fifty five, discussion and or action on County Road X intersection traffic count studies, Schofield Avenue to Weston Avenue.
Move to approve the contract with MSA for updating traffic counts along County Road X from Schofield Ave to Weston Ave for price not to exceed five thousand dollars for the village's share.
By Pincel?
Second.
Second by Cronin, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
So carried fifty-six discussion interaction on a one-ton dump truck uplift quotes. Dump body, plow, salt, and spreader.
Motion to approve.
To approve by Ermely. Second by Husheng, uh Zagami. Uh let's see, any more on the discussion? Hearing none? Oh, 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 um, this is your hand. Go ahead.
I think this is an excellent uh opportunity that we have to to utilize staff that we have, especially with a a lesser. With an El Nino E winter here. Um I just ask that when we approve this and do this. Um that if we could have staff keep close track of.
Excellent hours for the plow and wiring, excellent hours for the dump box, excellent hours. So we have an idea when we replace truck seventy-six next year. But hey, staff, we can do it and it actually costs us this and staff time versus, was it worth it to do it in-house versus have. And or someone else do it.
I mean, I was here, as long as you're gonna, I'm gonna have a little chance here to flap it a little bit. So like um that's pretty cool that we're doing components though. Cause I remember you couldn't do none of these components. You know, you were buying a whole truck all fully equipped or nothing. You know, we barely ever do that with the MPD. I mean, it's almost always new and then all the components come in i- if their styles changes, so. Same thing they're doing with that ship building up in Menominee and Marinette. It's all component building on those ships, so, okay. So you got what you want? We're good?
Sure.
All right, all those in um favor say aye.
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 Opposed, so carried fifty-seven discussion and or action on portable message board quotes. Second. Motion by Zagami, second by Pincinel.
Yeah, one quick question. I go, how many times have we have we used one of these in the past year?
Many times, well, um. When we can rent one, we do. Uh that's like uh Faroff Avenue, uh I guess that was two years ago. We had one rented to identify. Generally comes into play though where we can't get one, because the rental companies don't have it. Or we build it into a a contract with the contractor and they supply it. So we're, we pay for it out of the public works contract.
Is this something that we can share with other municipalities at a cost?
We could. I mean, I know the village of Rothschild, I think you have two of them perhaps.
We can't use one of theirs?
We have.
They don't share. Yes, they do. Yeah, right, they share. It's not even funny. All right, go ahead. What?
I I believe we did share it actually.
Michael from Rothschild. Yeah, all right.
We're up on the wrong side of the tracks for a little while.
Are you too? It's just getting better. Yeah, all right. So I'm very sorry to bring in that up. Um so let's see, so your question answered. Uh everybody in favor say aye.
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 All is so carried fifty-eight discussion interaction on inner springs construction services.
Move to approve construction representative contract with Breland Associates for inner springs first edition base to. The estimated contract range is one thousand four two thousand.
By Pincinel?
Second.
Second by Zagami. Any more in discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Also carried fifty-nine discussion and or action on Jellin Avenue Construction Services.
Move to approve engineering services amendment or deets for construction related services for rehab of Jellin Cav. From Mike Miller Street to Alderson Price not to exceed one hundred twenty-three thousand five hundred.
Motion by Pincinel. Second by Wyland. Any more in the questions?
Yes.
Husheng?
Is there a time on that project?
Yeah, so uh we have from the time school lets out on, I believe, May thirty-first until school starts again the last week of August, so.
How how many days is that?
Someone.
Twelve weeks maybe.
And so, and we're talking about Jellin Avenue, right?
Yeah.
Fifty-sixty days? Four months?
It's just, we're just repaving it though, right?
Uh we have um some water valve replacements, uh curb ramps, curb and gutter.
Will it all be closed?
The hope is to not have it fully closed there. Uh when we do like the valve replacements in the intersections, we'll have to close it. Um but um the milling of it should be hopefully pretty quick. As far as mil- milling it, getting rid of the asphalt and then repaving.
Really should be like all of the asphalt, right? That's definitely the number one, the number one road to get into a park or to a pool, correct?
Yeah.
I can just see the kids out there screaming.
I think that's a big number, large number.
Yeah, I was gonna say the same thing. I think for water valves and some curbs, a hundred twenty-three thousand dollars and we're spending. What, three hundred and forty-eight thousand to have Von Kennel and East Jellin completely redone? That's a lot of money for some repairs.
Yeah, so the, if you look at it, it's broken up.
Construction cost, Michael, I'm sorry. What's the construction cost?
I believe it's around six hundred thousand.
So ten percent, sixty percent, say twelve percent.
Yeah, so the twenty-three thousand is um additional design work. And so the construction related services is one oh nine. So um and they did maybe estimate a little high. This is a time of materials.
The cost of the project?
What? I I believe it's around six hundred, six hundred fifty thousand.
Ten percent is.
It's uh seventeen, it's seventeen percent, seventeen percent. Uh seventeen.
So again, it it is a time of materials, so if. They, a lot of these, they they estimate high, um you know, we don't necessarily need a full-time inspector on a lot of this. So I'd tell them, oh, go find another project right now. And uh you know, if it costs sixty thousand, seventy thousand, that's what we end up paying. We don't necessarily pay the one oh nine.
Sure, uh I what's worst case, if we approve, let's say seventy thousand and they go over that, they just have to come in for, we just have to come in for a change.
Back, correct.
So I would say we should look at what whatever twelve percent of s- six hundred thousand is, approve that number.
Sixteen point nine is what what we're approving right now.
That'd be my thought.
So six thousand what?
What's what's twelve percent of six hundred thousand?
Oh, you said six fifty, you're wrong.
Yeah, yeah.
Seventy-two, sixty, seventy, something.
So I would.
Seventy-eight thousand.
Seventy-eight thousand.
I would like to amend your motion for an amount not to exceed seventy-five thousand dollars.
I'll second that. Any more in discussion?
For the construction related services?
For all services.
Okay, cause they have twenty-three thousand seven hundred of design that I I guess is spent, I I.
That is part of that one twenty-three?
That's part of the one twenty-three, yeah.
Yeah, then we should add that.
So a hundred grand.
Hundred thousand.
Well, I'll be ninety.
I'll draw my second.
I'll withdraw mine and then I will amend your motion um for an amount not to exceed one hundred.
Second dance. Anybody say pickleball? So where are we on?
We have to hold on the amendment.
Yeah, well, they grab my hand and take me through this. What are we doing? Any more in discussion? Hearing none? Can I say? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried, now again, let's do it again. Now on the original motion, correct? The original motion, um all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Appalled? So carried again, is there three or just two? Two, thank you. Well, all right, so now we got sixty discussion interaction on Weston Avenue, Alderson to Birch, design amendment for the Alderson Street. Sanitary sewer design. The Alderson, and no color on the roundabout, right? Rothschild won't pay. Right? I'm sorry, oh damn it, you're ready here still. Well, we wanted one color and you guys wanted a different color and we decided that Christmas just ain't gonna happen year round, so.
Um I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, motion by Cronin to approve.
Second.
Second by Pincinel. Any more in discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Okay, thank you all. That was just a very, very little bit of humor there added in. Sixty-one discussion and or action on twenty twenty-four billing rates to other entities. Motion to approve. Motion approved by Cronin, second by Zagami. Questions by Pincinel?
Yeah, um why is this recommended to be effective four-four instead of three-one tomorrow?
Oh, so for the town of Weston, um I can't get it.
Okay.
Um. We had to give up so many days notice.
Very well. Uh granite is listed as twenty twenty-one. Is that rate still correct three years later?
That's pretty much, so the the rate should actually be effective now, but the. You will not see it on the town of Westonville until.
That's fine.
Okay.
So my question, this is the second question then is, is on the the cost of granite, is that set in stone, no pun intended? It says twenty twenty-one next to it. Look, he either voted for me or he didn't. So is the twenty twenty-one rate on granite still correct?
I assume song work twist dance.
Yeah, that looks like it's still accurate. Um we usually pay based on what the. The pit cost is, so generally speaking, when we go pick it up, that that cost hasn't changed a whole lot over the years.
Good, and the last question, salt per yard, the number that we're updating it to is the number in red, not the number in black, correct? Number in black is today's date or today's rate, and for next season it will be one seventeen thirty.
Uh so that's the difference between per ton and per yard. So it's one oh two per ton or one seventeen per yard.
Very well, thank you. No further questions here on it.
Okay. Um did you have your hand up, Michael?
I was just saying, when, what date did you say this would be effective?
I assume it's effective right away, but we just can't build the town.
Because of the town.
Rates, cause they.
I I I just know in the past, I thought we started at July one through June, that way like winter season was always the same rate, but that's fine.
Hearing no more discussion, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? So carried. Motion to move to closed session pursuant to Wisconsin stat nineteen point eight five parent one, parent E delivering or negotiating purchasing of public. Properties, investing in public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever. Then for bargaining reasons require a closed session to win. Offer purchase property located fifty-five hundred Schofield Avenue. Request for tax incremental financing for a potential multi-tenant commercial project located at twenty-three hundred and twenty-three oh four. Avenue to discuss police department staffing, normal nominal payment parcel report for establishing initial offerings. On the right away for Weston Avenue Von Kennel Street to Ryan Street. Nominal payment parcel report for establishing initial offerings on the right away for Weston Avenue, Alderson Street, Alderson Street to Birch Street. Um continuing closed session pursuant to uh nineteen point eight five parent one, parent C. Considering employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee. Over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility to wit. Recommended twenty twenty-four market adjustment compensation changes for competitiveness and recommended merit adjustment compensation changes for performance. And reclassification review procedure from public works container to public works operator. Roll call vote?
Correct.
Oh, what? Who do we want? Do we want people to stay?
Well, I I said we would come get them when we got to that item.
Oh, okay, okay.
The order we went.
All right, have a nice seat. Is the conference room open or something, or chairs?
I can go.
I can open it.
There's somebody rolling. Cause I realize there's no chairs out there. Yeah, it's rolling. Thank you. Uh, oh, I'm sorry, Neil.
Uh Kristen Fish wants to know if she'll be allowed in closed session for the lock redevelopment. It will be. At that point, yes.
Yes, at that point, yes.
You handle it, oh.
Sure, if you give me control.
And we might have the individuals from that have the offer for fifty-five. I I sent them the link, they got.
You'll be in it? Okay.
Yeah, so.
And then Barbara, can she stand?
I thought Barb can't stand.
Okay, she's not supposed to, right, okay. All right, Barb, thank you.
Yes, just let me know when you come back.
We'll do that. All right, thank you.
Your host.
Oh, okay, cool.
All right, so are we?
We have to, we have to vote.
Oh, yeah, yeah, vote, sorry, uh roll call vote, what?
Motion to move into closed session.
By Cronin, second by Pincinel, roll call.
Lani?
Yes.
Zagami?
Yes.
Cronin?
Yes.
Pincinel?
Yes.
Wyland?
Yes.
Do you want Barb's vote too?
We're in closed session, she can't be in here.
Okay, I'll kick her out then.
Yeah.
But you're right, I should have. She can move to go in a closed session, so Ermely? Aye.
Thanks, Barb. See ya.
Now she's going to wait here.
Okay.
And we'll just wait till Michael gets recording stopped.
Where do you see that?
Says record right on the top with the red light.
Stop it.
All right.
And you didn't see that that fetus. Yeah, I see it, it's plain as day. Right?
Yep.
Barb, you still up?
It's eleven o'clock.
Barb? No, she's in Florida.
She's, it's a, it's an hour.
In Florida? Oh, she's on the east side? All right.
The whole state, I think it's same time zone.
Don't hit the west side, Florida is in our time zone. Uh huh, Panhandle.
Yeah, part of the Panhandle.
I'm here.
I knew somebody would be with me on that one.
What time is it there, Barb?
What time is it, Barb?
Uh it is right now. Ten fifty-nine.
Okay, so it's nine fifty-nine here. We're just finishing up on some Jimmy John's. But let's uh, no, I'm just teasing. No, we're not, no, we're not. All right, so Barb, we uh we're back into open session. Do we wanna run down a little bit for her? Or no, we can't open it.
No, no.
Okay, so you're just gonna kinda have to, you're just gonna hear us vote on these items, okay?
She can she vote?
And you can vote if you want, if you wanna kinda.
Yes.
Well, you're you're a couple of seconds behind us, so you can, you know, stay with the winners or the losers, it's either way. All right, so um possible action on closed session items. It, I I heard the word assist, so assist me as you wish. Uh offer to purchase the property located at fifty-five hundred Schofield Avenue, uh uh obviously the old municipal building. Um.
Motion to reject the.
Motion to reject by Cronin.
Second.
Second by Wyland. Any more on the discussion?
And communicate back with the off, the person that offered tomorrow.
Yes, and we'll communicate back tomorrow. Uh no, none, I'm not saying, um all in favor of rejecting, say aye.
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 Opposed, so carried, thank you. All right, uh request for tax incremental financing for a potential multi-tenant commercial project. To be located at twenty-three hundred and twenty-three oh four Schofield Avenue.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Wyland.
Second.
Second by Cronin. Anything on the discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, so we have one dissension and uh. One, two, three, four, five, yeah, yeah, yeses, so five to one that carries and approved. To discuss police staffing, uh department staffing, so we.
Two separate motions here.
Yeah, we're approving the attorney, the um uh uh third hand or whatever, the attorney that's gonna work for both communities. Um okay, let's do that second, yep. Go ahead.
Uh motion to approve um the attorney fees as presented, split sixty and forty between Wes and then remote um Rothschild.
Second, motion to approve by Cronin, second by Pincinel. Uh all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Was that a yes, Barbara, or no?
You're getting your last.
I I'm sorry, I cleared my throat here.
You just swallowed olive or something, or what? All right, thank you. I'm so carried.
Motion to approve the eligibility list or the creation of an eligibility list for the metro, for the Mountain Bay Metro Police Department.
Uh motion by Cronin.
Second.
Second by Zagami. Uh all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried, thank you. Uh nominal payment parcel report for establishing initial offerings on the right away from Weston Avenue. Parentheses Von Kennel Street to Ryan Street. Move to approve by Zagami.
Second.
Second by Wyland. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So Carrie, nominal payment parcel report for establishing initial offerings on the right of way for Weston Avenue Alderson Street to Birch Street.
Want to approve.
Uh, motion to approve by Zagami?
Second.
Second by Pincel. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Barb?
Oh, aye, I'm sorry.
Alright, that's right. Take your time. Uh, opposed, so Carrie. Uh, let's see, recommended two thousand and twenty-four market adjustment compensation changes for competitiveness. And recommended merit adjustment compensation changes for performance.
Could you repeat the motion?
Motion to approve by Wyland?
Um, that would be the motion to approve for all staff who have a satisfactory performance evaluation on file with the administrator starting January eighth, twenty twenty-four.
Second that.
Second by Zagami. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so Carrie. Last one, this is the one we've been looking for, everybody. It's ten oh three. Reclassification review procedure from public works maintainer to public works operator. What's your mo, what's your pleasure?
Want to approve.
Want to approve by Zagami, second?
Hold on.
Second.
With, um, including back pay of two hundred thirty-six dollars and sixty-five cents.
I believe it says fifty-six cents.
Sixty-five.
Five, oh, I thought you had transposed it.
Please add to the motion that, please add that one to the vote.
I'm not real a drive pool.
No, you need to second.
Alright, second, second by Pincel. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so Carrie, attorney referrals, hearing none?
Nope, 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 nope.
Staff referrals, hearing none?
Order.
Barb, you want something for staff referrals? Oh, no, wait, we're gonna do it differently now. Remarks from trustees, Barb, you first.
There's still agenda items.
Nothing to report, I'm just enjoying my vacation.
Yeah, where's the attendance? In your hand. What are you talking about?
You deferred the surplus, uh, the surplus items.
Yeah.
Yes, fifty-three, number fifty-three, the surplus.
No way. Fifty-three, we deferred it to the end of the meeting?
Yes.
Over, after it's full session.
Oh my god, we did.
It's been a minute, Barb, to get.
Oh my god, damn it, I gotta put an alarm on this.
Fifty-four, actually.
At ten twenty, we're out of here. Alright, go ahead, fifty-three.
Fifty-four.
Sorry.
Fifty-four. Discussion and or action on surplus auction items. Can somebody play some scary music? Oh my god, let's get this thing going.
The only bef, before we, we make a motion here, my only reservation is with lot six and lot seven. I, I understand that we want to, I, I, if you want to list it and get some money for it, I understand that, but what I have a problem with is we decided to buy another salt shed, change our ordinance and not move that because we were told it couldn't be torn down and moved.
And? So. What's your point? No, seriously.
Are, are we now gonna say that it's okay for someone to come into that building now and move it and put it back up? Even though we couldn't do it and we had to change our ordinance and spend four hundred and fifty dollars.
You know what, it still has to.
It would have to be re-engineered because it's a commercial building, right?
The issue we had with it was.
We couldn't, it couldn't be salt buried.
Yeah.
It couldn't hold salt. You want to put that in there and put a little bit of hay in there and some chickens, go for it.
Okay.
Or we use it.
There are permanent fields chickens.
Or, or use it to, I mean, I don't know, that'd probably come over your basement if you use that wood, yuck.
Cause I actually did look at what, what it would cost us to try to relocate one of the metal buildings, like if we wanted something on it Ryan Street. And essentially there's the building codes have changed where if you tried to reuse that, we wouldn't have somebody who likely would stamp it and say, yep, that is a structural, so you'd have kind of an insurance liability if you if you wanted to use it for a commercial purpose. If a farmer wanted to go get it and put it on their field somewhere.
I say, we can get, we can get some dollars, let her snap.
Move the proof.
Move to, uh, what are we doing? Uh, move to approve by Zagami?
What, what is it? Please restate the motion.
What was that again?
Yeah.
Or previous motion?
Discussion and or action on surplus auction items.
Oh, the previous motion, very well.
Good, okay. Do, do we have the previous motion?
Well, the, the.
I, I can restate it.
Come on, it's all those pictures. We want to sell everything.
Go ahead and restate it.
I'll take my motion back, Mr. President.
Okay, thank you.
I will draw my second.
Uh, you're gonna throw your second.
Uh, I move to declare the above property surplus to include all of the buildings and remaining property of all ground infrastructure less that which is relating to the sewer and water utility. Furniture and fixtures at the fifty-five hundred property. And authorize staff to sell and dispose those items via Wisconsin Surplus Auction. Reserve bid of one dollar.
A motion by Pincel, second by
second.
By Zagami, on the question, on the question. Does, so staff has full right, uh, to intently sell everything. And, and then, and then we're gonna, and then the buildings will be, the buildings will be left?
Don't with, to include the building?
Oh, no, if they can move it, but I mean, obviously not the brick one. And then, and then at then?
Include the brick one, you can list the brick one, you can list the water fountain and the brick one, you can list anything that the, the light bulbs that are there, the.
I'm gonna play, light pole is the, I'm, I'm on the same team.
As long as we receive a dollar.
Yep.
Correct.
Yep.
Okay.
And the whole harmless agreement is signed.
Got it.
Okay.
And then we market the, the land. Alright.
For a motion and.
Yep, uh, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Great, I'm gonna, I'm gonna offer two bucks for the salt checks. Can we buy it? You can, we can, alright. So are we gonna be able to see a current bid or is there like a tick tock going down or?
Yeah, it'll, it'll delete it. On, on, once it's, once the auction is live, like if you want to bid on it, it'll tell you it's currently, you know, four hundred dollars.
How long will it go at the auction?
A long weeks? We, we can, we can say one week, we can say four weeks, we can say six weeks, we can.
Can you please send me a link of that and I'll, I'll be able to look at the trucks, the plows, all the stuff, the
I don't know.
Toilet handles, yeah.
You can put it in your backyard or something on the road.
I'm gonna put it across the room. I'm gonna be able to go to your house.
When does Brian plan to put that lot on?
You gotta hard negotiate, that's all I got to say.
We'd probably get it on later this week.
Okay. Yeah, cause he's gotta, he has to upload all that information, so.
And then usually they tell you, you know, hey, it's gonna take us two days to get it, you know, up and running.
This is gonna be like a bendy, is that a word? An awful lot of moats just thrown in there. There's gonna be people just going, and can anybody buy this? Anybody?
Anyone, and then just, I mean, anyone across the world, as long as you.
You'll have people from Ohio coming up here to buy the light pole. Serious.
You let me know when somebody comes up from Ohio to buy a light pole.
We've had people from Minnesota before.
What are we, so if we're gonna actually take people over there, let them walk through the building and then say, I'll buy that, you're.
They're gonna look at the photo, like the auction pajamas, and say, yep, I'll bid five dollars for that thing.
And it's a new world.
Probably we can put up. We can put it on on my property.
They're not.
Not across the river.
See, oh, I see, the bridge, bridge, yeah. The kayakers.
Our own T and R.
The cockers are gonna, oh my god, please, please god not. Can you imagine the waiting room for all these cats, you know, with their hats, other bellies, all the stuff, yikes? And we're all, three more days before they can be released into their territory. Uh, hey, hey, we gotta get out of this, Jesus, we're sitting right. The hell, something is. Moody's lost it. Uh, turn for staff, remarks from trustees, any remarks from trustees?
I thought you had an attorney referral.
Uh, no, it's, he said no. I just, I just referenced previous work done with the attorney that we didn't.
Just a short comment.
Yeah.
In that conference, I mean, uh, one of the question we had to this, but we can add to the life of the fifth district one year. And use the money for, uh, or housing. And then, yes. And the housing, it doesn't have to be in the fifth area. It could be any place in the village of us.
Right, there's new legislation that passed.
Yep.
So we've got three, we were one stakeholder, we've got the DC Everest, uh, the tech and Marathon County. And, uh, has anybody had any conversations with any of those that?
All this stuff is really new. I'm going in April to my APA conference over in Minnesota and a lot of it is on housing.
Did the school district hire a new, um, finance person yet?
Thanks, I have a, a meeting and a tour scheduled with the superintendent, but it's a couple of weeks out.
Okay, cause I, Jack was just doing an interim.
I'm brain dead, so I'm trying what to do. Have we done remarks or?
It's.
Those remarks, did, are you had something to say, or did you?
No, but, and we don't have to wait for the end of the fifth districts to do that. You can do it today.
Okay.
I'm done.
Your bills?
Yes. Mr. Cronin, okay, alright. Um, I would ask that the EMPD joint finance report get added to the committee commissioners report section of the agenda. It's not on there currently.
Okay. We're gonna get them all tomorrow.
Yeah.
Great.
Um.
You say commissioner or committee?
Committee and commission.